Okay, thank you. We'll pull things together and call the meeting to order here on Tuesday, February 5. Our first matter is a public hearing, and this is for Cary Holmes LLC, formerly Belai, application for an integrated plot plan amendment for a clearing and grading limit line amendment approval, steep slope permit and tree removal permit, 54 and 60 Cary Lane. So this, are we just opening it now? This is the first time? Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor? Or how about a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Don't be stark, but we're going.
Okay. So we're here this evening for the public hearing to amend the site plan for the previous limits of disturbance. We have now requested the board to review and amend the new revised limits of disturbance with, which are the area around the cul-de-sac area here, which permits us to go further back in, further, I should say, further back from the cul-de-sac in order to reduce a originally designed retaining wall of six feet down to a field stone retaining wall of four feet that lies just under the edge here of the blue area. Alongside the roadway to the left, there was a, again, an originally designed retaining wall, but based on the field conditions and as we hammered the rock in this area, it was very, very friable and really didn't hold up very well at all, and we were able to slope back the entire area to a one-on-one for rock and a two-on-one for conventional seed and dirt. And then we included in this plan as well, the part of the requirement as with the site plan is the septic system here, as well as we are in the, we are in the stages of getting a building permit to alter, additional alteration renovation of this, of the old existing residence, which would require obviously to do some work in and around the area here, along with the, with the walkways in the front of the house as well. Those are, these are, these blue areas here are the proposed new changes.
Okay.
We've, we've addressed the comments from Bob Seale's memo, we've revised the building, they built the wall detail.
Right.
Included in this plan. We've addressed Steve Coleman's concerns as, we, I reviewed the plans with Steve. I think his memo shares a concern of, a request as far as to increase the size of the tree replacement to three inches.
Mm-hmm.
Or five, I, I'm sorry, three inches. So I think we're amenable to that without a problem. We certainly advise them to do that.
I know we had a lot of concern last time, Bob, with the, the wall, and you-
They did submit plans to the PDF. I reviewed the plans, they did deep up the wall as far as its structural integrity, and I find the plans acceptable.
Okay.
Does it need a railing or anything? Is it low enough that it doesn't need a railing?
No, it's gonna be on the, it's down the slope quite a ways, but there'd be a guiderail up on top by the cul-de-sac for vehicle safety.
Thank you.
The only comment I had was, are we okay with the red maples? Are those native? Are those the king crimson or something like this?
Yes, I would consider that being provided, so it's acceptable.
Okay, good. All right. Any questions at all from board members? Screened anything?
No, I prepared a, a part two and three of the PDF to review.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any comments from the public on this application? Okay, not seeing any. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Sabrina said, we have before us a short environmental assessment form, part two, part three before us, and indicating that they're, defining that there is not any significant environmental impact. Questions on that, issues? If not, is there a motion to adopt the short form assessment that was drawn up by staff?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we also have before us a draft resolution that staff and Leo has prepared, have prepared for us. I think we got this out maybe two days in advance, so we had plenty of time on this one. So-
It essentially incorporates the conditions that were in Bob's memo and Steve's memo.
Right, right, right. Any questions, issues on the resolution that's before us?
I have a couple of questions on that, clear on. Item four, which is on page four, four, you know, four A, one and two, and four. Dimension, the minimum size of the stone for the wall. Okay. Is there maximum size also? Do we care if they make huge boulders?
No, they usually put in the D-50, which is the average size of the wall, and in there, in the specifications, they indicate the minimum weight. Were you mainly concerned with the average size of the stone?
Yeah.
For the D-50?
Yeah. So that's one. And then the other, the footing depth should be a minimum of three to, three, three feet, six inches. What if you're, I guess that's okay, three foot, six inches. Does that stand?
That's definitely the frost in this area.
That's frosty.
Yes.
I guess that's it. And then I guess number two, the minimum weight of the stone as opposed to the, I don't know, if you need a range, there should be, in a way, it should be defining D-50 or something, but it's-
They did that on the plans, like I said, the PDF did address all of these items.
All right.
Did you want to put a maximum? Were you concerned with that? So it's not just big boulders?
I, you know, I just think it should be referenced to the standard D-50.
Okay, fine. Okay. All right. We'll make that change. Okay. Anything else? If not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we move now to our second matter, and this is the Chapel Cross Central School District application. This is an application for a preliminary, excuse me, yeah, that's right, application for a preliminary subdivision plot, tree removal permits, deep slopes permits, stormwater pollution prevention plan approvals, and this is at Button Hook Road in Gary Lane.
Hi, good evening. Good to see you again.
Yep, thank you.
Randy Catches representing the Chapel Cross Central School System. Just as an overview, we got to this project because the school system has a school education law that requires them, if they do have an asset, and that asset is not being used for the foreseeable future, they have to liquidate that asset and return that money to the taxpayers, the taxing authority. So that began this journey over six years ago to hopefully create the correct project that we're working on today. We think we came here with three real objectives. The first objective, obviously, was to abide by that law and be able to liquidate this asset and return that money to the taxpayer, which we think we're well on our way of doing. First of all, thank you to the board, and also thank you to staff, who's been uncompromising the amount of time that both Bob and Sabrina and Steve have put in and helped us with throughout the process. It's been a long process, but tremendously helpful. The second thing was our commitment as a community member to ensure that we were good community members, because as part of the community, the school system, I believe we've achieved that with the plan before you. And thirdly, it was important that with the immediate neighbors, that we be good neighbors. So about a week and a half ago, we met our seventh time with the neighbors, we've kept them informed all the way along, answered their questions. As the change from plan to plan to plan, we've been able to discuss that with them, have open meetings at Seven Bridges to ensure that they're, they're up to speed on that. So without further ado, I will let Jerry begin the process of reviewing the plan. Thank you again.
This is our first meeting for a public hearing?
Yeah, just a quick note before we get into things. Since this is a subdivision application and we have not concluded SECRE yet, the board will need to conclude SECRE before we officially make a motion to open the public hearing. So in that regard, you do have before you a draft part two and part three of the environmental assessment form that was prepared for you. The part three includes a description of the relevant environmental concerns and concludes that there will be no significant adverse environmental impact as a result of the project, and it goes through all of the details that the board has reviewed for the project so far, including tree removal and replacement, stormwater, and other environmental impacts.
Okay. Are board members satisfied with the statement that we've seen?
Let's just have a quick question. On page one, it references twice the four-bedroom homes, but some of the homes will be larger, four, five, and six-bedroom homes. Is that germane to the information you're mentioning?
No, I think the bedrooms, you know, ultimately, the, they'll have to size the septic for the proposed home in accordance with how many bedrooms are proposed for the home. I, I think we can exclude the reference to four bedrooms, just to give some flexibility. Some may have three, some may have five in the future.
Well, I think one is proposed as six, so-
Yeah, regardless, the septic will have to be sized and approved by Westchester County Department of Health for the number of bedrooms that are proposed.
Jennifer, the document also says that this is within the city watershed, but there's no wetlands and no wetland buffers on the property. How close are we to either buffers or wetlands? Does anybody know?
I'm going to defer to staff.
Are they right around the corner, or are we a distance away?
Right down the hill, I think.
It's located on the property to the east.
East.
On the rear property line now. The buffer extends just about within probably 50 feet of the property line.
So the wetland buffer is 50 feet to the eastern property line?
Eastern property line.
And it's a fairly large wetland to the east of the property.
It's a large wetland system. It was a, it was a former application, I'd say about 15 years ago. It's called the Gosin application, and they had looked to do a subdivision and essentially gave up because of the extensive amount of wetland and lack of suitable septic area.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion to adopt the, the secret statement?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Jerry Barrett, the site planner, landscape architect for the project, of course, here with Mr. Catches and Mr. Chow from the school, and Bill Beckman is the civil engineer who's been working with us on the stormwater. To step back one thing, yes, the septic all have been sized, and I think we have it indicated on the plan, but there are, I think, two sixes, two fives, and a four, something like that.
Right, right.
But that's how it's been done, yes. So I'm gonna get started, and I'll quickly, not quickly, but at least give you guys an overview, I think you've all seen this before. Our site is about 20 acres. It's a series of high points. You can see those red crosses. I would point with my pointer, but for some reason, they don't work on TVs.
You have an outdated one.
I guess I'm outdated here. I thought it was me. So you've got a high point, a high point, and another high point. So it, the, the site is really kind of a plateau. It's rolling, it's really, it's, it's really a good site. And, and what you're seeing, all these dots, these are all the trees in there. So here's the, this is the proposed layout. There's gonna be six lots coming in. You know, you've got Gary Drive here, and you've got Button Hook, and that Button Hook extension ends right about here, and we'll be picking up and coming in here. To answer your question about the wetland systems in the area, you can see we're over here. This is the water course on the Gosin, the former Gosin property that Steve was talking about, and you can see the other area, wetland areas. So we had done a zoning conformance plan. Of course, we're in the two-acre zone. We have a 20-acre lot. There's going to be six lots, average lot size is about 2.68 acres. Each lot has been designed to include a driveway with a drop-off, a home, a patio, a pool, a cabana. Not that all these would be built, but for planning purposes, we've shown everything. So you can see what a total build-out might be. It's a 1,200-foot road. It is designed to town standards, and proposed that the town will take over as a town road.
Jerry, those drop-offs, real quick question. It looked like from the sketch that those were going to be gravel or some sort of stone, some sort of pervious?
Yeah, we, we typically like to change it to like a, like a specialty paving. It's kind of a gracious kind of entry statement. It's an entry court, if you will. A lot of times, we could use pervious pavers in, in those areas. Bill, I know, didn't take it into that, into account, but that would be over and above. But typically, yeah, those get highlighted and kind of customary with some of the, you know, some of the homes in the area.
Bob, would they get credit for that on, in the stormwater plans, or?
If you do soil investigation for the soil type and the infiltration rate, you can use a different curve number. We're from Watsons, you use a lower curve number. Curve number predicates how much runoff is developed on the site. It would reduce the runoff somewhat.
Okay.
So the bottom line is, we have a fully zoning compliant layout. So this is the site plan that we came up with, and what you see in green, these are the existing trees that will remain through the property. This is a fully wooded property. We've done a detailed tree removal and replacement plan, but one of the things we worked very hard with, with the planning board, was to try to get these homes back off of the lot and try to retain as, as much trees in between, so the, so the subdivision, as you pull in, has an established look to it, framed with larger trees, and I think we've accomplished that as best we can. What you're seeing in these, these are individual trees that would be preserved during construction, and when you see, this is what we call the grading limit line, it's also the same thing as the protected open space, the protected buffer area, we've determined to call it. And that's gonna be, that's gonna be survey located, there's gonna be concrete markers that are in the ground, and it's gonna go all the way around. So out of the 20-acre plus site, about 10 acres is gonna be protected in green. This will be managed by the HOA, and it's, we need to come up with some language of what you can do and can't do, but the idea is that stays in perpetuity, and, and that keeps, you know, the integrity of the neighborhood and the buffer together. One of the things that Steve was very concerned with was keeping these fingers for the migration of wildlife back and forth, and the school district agreed. So all that is in protected space, and these trees should be there for the long run. This is the stormwater management area. This will also become meadow area. This remains trees, and you'll see when we get to the planting that we have quite a bit of planting that now goes on here. We're also taking out, I think about, we have to relocate approximately 1,200 feet of existing stone wall. The site has stone walls going through it. It must have been farmed at one point in the past. But we're going to reinstall 1,340 feet of stone wall, and we thought it would really be a good way to reuse the stone, to come along the front property lines and have a continually, a continual low stone wall along the front property lines and kind of make a, kind of an established look to the, to the neighborhood. This was our tree removal plan, and again, the protected area is this green area going around, and all these little red Xs you see through. We did comprehensive, each tree was survey located. We went out there, we evaluated the trees for, for type, size, relative health, and then once we did our grading plan and we established where we have to do grading to get the homes in and what trees have to come out, it was determined that we had to remove approximately 471 trees that were in fair to good condition, and 205 trees or so that were poor to dead. In total, we had to remove 471, about 600 trees were coming out. Of course, we're gonna be replacing quite a bit of trees as well to compensate for that. So this is the, this is, this is half of the site where we did our planting plan, this is the tree replacement planting plan. And what you're seeing, this is our plant list of what's going on, and when you see these green circles all throughout, these are the new tree plantings. And there, there's going to be a dense hedge row, a natural hedge row, if will, there's gonna be a mixture of evergreen trees and deciduous trees, and also shrubbery. When you see these, these red, I know it's hard to, to see on this plan, but each one of the groupings of shrubs, we've also, we, we put major trees in, and we put minor understory trees in, and then we put groups of, of shrubs in there, large shrubs, bay hiberniums and lilac, and things that'll get large, and we typically group those in groups of eight or nine, so we kind of make a, make a mass out of them. There's quite a bit of habitat value in those shrubs with berries and that kind of thing. And we could use those a lot in the, in the understory areas. Those will all get netted to, to protect them while they get established. Not so, not so much a problem with the trees, because the deer can't reach up and devour the trees, but we will be netting the, the trunks per Steve Coleman's comment, to keep the deers from damaging the, the trunks.
Steve, just remind us again, the number of shrubs are equal to a tree?
Planting is 1,072 shrubs. That represents 25% of the tree replacement.
Okay, so it's like a four to one thing with shrubs?
It's a ratio of one tree per eight shrubs.
Eight shrubs, okay, thank you.
So that is, this is the first, this is the, the southern part of the site, and then we have a similar plan for the northern part of the site, and it's the same type of thing. We're planting all the edges, so when you do have that, you know, that, that cut, and you have these 50, 60-foot trees, we'll be planting at the edge of that with new trees that'll go in about 15, 20 feet tall, so it'll make kind of a nice transition to fill that gap, and they'll slowly fill that in. And, you know, we're thickening up the buffer between all of these, you know, at all of these edges. One of the things that the, the school district has requested that the planning board consider is a reduction in the replacements for invasive trees. So we removed the invasive trees, and as a result of removing the invasive trees that were in fair to good health, there's 144 replacement trees that would have to be replaced. We suggested that perhaps that could be reduced by 50%, so instead of 144 trees, instead install 72 trees to compensate for that. And what we've shown in gray is why we think it's, it's reasonable, because, you know, this is a lot of trees to get on this site. As you see, we've worked hard to get them all in there, and the ones that we decided to drop out, if we could obtain that 50% waiver from the planning board, would be the ones that we're really putting in the understory. It's really occurring, it's really occurring on the east side of the property, where there's a large undeveloped wooded area here dominated by a wetland that's probably never gonna be developed, and you can see, here they are again, the gray ones. So the school district would be appreciative if the board could consider that.
Why did you pick, originally pick those locations for the, for the trees that now you say that you really don't want to plant? Why'd you put them there to begin with?
We were-
Is there something about those particular locations that-
Well, you know, there's only so much space, we didn't, so much space we have to work with, and we're trying to-
Why'd you put them there, in those particular locations? Is it because there aren't a lot of trees there, and there's sunlight in those locations, or you had to have a reason to put them in those locations?
Well, you know, I, I think that, you know, that when you're out there and you're in the field, you'll see that there's some areas of the understory that are gonna be sparse. Now, you know, I'm not sure if it's gonna be here, it's gonna be here, but typically what we do is we go out there and field place them, but because, you know, we, we filled the edges as much as we can, and we still had trees to install, we discussed, maybe, well, why don't we just add understory trees? So understory trees can be birch trees, they could be shadlo, ironwood, things that would fill in underneath.
But you didn't do it just by looking at the plan, you did it from a site survey saying, this is where these should go, right?
Well, we know where the trees are, so yeah, so we placed them in there, and of course, there would be adjustments. There's always field adjustments, with every planning plan, there's always a field adjustment.
So just to follow up, so those, having located them there, part of the judgment is that they will best survive in those locations as opposed to another location, and make a contribution to, in those locations.
They would be appropriate to the understory.
Thank you.
But one of the issues, I think, when we went out there for our site visit, one of the things, one of my takeaways was that the density of, of the Norway maples that are the invasives that we're really talking about was overwhelming. It was almost jungle-like in some areas, where you really, you just couldn't even walk through it. And when it's fully leafed, it was just crazy dense, I mean, not something that you, you could have any, any other kind of understory. So my own personal take is, is similar to Steve's. I think Steve supports the notion that we use 50% consideration for removal of those invasives.
I'd like-
Pardon?
Come on, sorry.
So I, I think it would be appropriate, given where we were starting on this, and I think with the planning plan that you've come up with, I, I think it makes, makes sense, and I personally would be in favor of that waiver.
Well, before I get there, I'm not there yet.
Okay.
Can you indicate where the Norway maples, you've chosen to take them out?
I'd have to, there's, they're scattered throughout the site.
Everywhere.
I would have to go back and, you know, go through it and highlight where they are.
But they aren't, some of them are in the areas where you're clearing anyway for development.
Oh, without doubt.
Right. And then the balance of them are by suggestion of the town, that you should take them out of the forest?
The only trees, the only trees that are coming out is within this grading limit line, or these white areas.
So they're coming out anyway?
They're coming out.
Anyway.
If there's a Norway maple in this wooded area to remain, it's gonna remain there.
Okay, so, right. So the, the Norway maples are coming out anyway?
Correct.
They could be oaks, they could be, they could be poplars, they could be anything. They're coming out anyway. Right. So I guess I'm not there yet by saying that there ought to be a credit for a tree you're taking out anyway. It's, it's something that's going to come out anyway.
Except, except that, you know, we view this through the lens that there's invasive, undesirable trees, and there's-
But they're coming-
And there's native, desirable trees.
And I think also because they're so dense, this is not what you typically see in our hardwood for, forests. These are, these things are like one foot, two feet apart, so that's why there's such a disproportionate number of trees that are being cleared because of the nature of these weed trees.
Okay, but they're, but let me just finish. They are coming out anyway. There is no, there is no, there is no altruism here, there's no actual, let me just, there is actually no special contribution to, that this project is making above and beyond for the purposes of development, is making to the environment by taking these trees out because they're coming out anyway. So I, I'm just trying to get to the rationale that says that why there should be a, a special grant essentially to the applicant, to the developer for taking out Norway maples that are coming out to their benefit anyway. I, I just don't get that, and let me just, I understand Norway maples and what they do to, because of the root structure and what happens in the chemicals, what they do to all the plants in their understory, and I get all that, but at the same time, they still are habitat to a certain extent for, for birds and for other kinds of wildlife. So they do make a contribution.
They do make a minor contribution, but, you know, when we drafted that suggested language in the code, it was designed to really recognize that it's important to manage invasive, you know, trees or shrubs or other plants that are coming in our natural environment. And by the way we modified the tree replacement, we're getting, you know, the introduction back into a forested area of native trees of different sizes, different age classes. We're adding the shrub layers, so we're, we're increasing the diversity. I mean, Norway maple, as you mentioned, is a particular tree that, you know, prevents anything else from growing, so-
I understood, I understand.
... and replanting with the extensive, you know, list that they have, it provides the opportunity to, you know, improve the seed and fruit production habitat, you know, for a variety of wildlife species, and so that's why we felt, you know, we should give an opportunity for people to get some credit for taking on removal, because there's some areas where they probably wouldn't have to remove the, you know, Norway maple, and there's still gonna be a lot of Norway maple left on this site.
So, okay, now let's get to, so here's another way to do this, I think. If our concern are that it should be the Norway maples that will remain on the site, maybe we ought to find a way to deal with credits or whatever and say, you know what, if you want some sort of a bonus payback or whatever for taking out the Norway maples, that you're gonna take out anyway. Maybe we ought to say, well, instead of planting 74, what is it, 74 or 72?
72.
Trees, take out some more Norway maples, and you don't have to replace those in areas where they remain and where they will continue to be invasive.
And based on those comments you had a few months ago, we did play around with looking at the language within the, you know, current code, and there's nothing that really allows us to do that at this point.
Well, but-
You know, so it would require, I think, an amendment or a change to the tree ordinance to be able to do that.
It doesn't require an amendment to the tree ordinance if we just do it by, by agreement. We don't-
I defer to council, because they kind of guided, guided us on that, whether it was feasible to really do.
Well, I think the, I think the other question too is if you're, so that, that would involve, so if, just so I get this straight, you would not grant the waiver, but instead you would say applicant, take trees out of the, what's called the finger areas, and we won't require you to replace them. So then they're expending additional monies to, to remove those trees. For, for what? I, I guess I'm just not really understanding-
To get rid of the invasive trees.
Right, but what's-
That's why.
But to do that- But to do that, it would require more than just cutting the trees, I mean, you'd have to do some kind of replanting plan to prevent them from coming back or other invasives from coming in.
And remove the root systems.
So I think it's more involved with, you know, it's not as if it's removing and you have to really...
My take on is because of the nature of the trees, this, there are so many more trees that are being taken out because of the nature of these Norway maples, there are just so many more. It is true, they're going to be taken out anyway, but because this is a poorly functioning forest with these trees in here, I, it's a judgment call, but I think the applicant is being unduly charged with taking out more trees than we would normally see in a hardwood forest around here, except for the fact that these are Norway maples, and these things survive next to each other and drown out everything else. So for every square foot that you are clearing here, you have a disproportionately high number of trees such that...
If these weren't Norway maples, would they, would the applicant be asking for the 50 percent reduction?
If they were not Norway maples, they would not be that dense.
But the, but the...
So you wouldn't have the number...
Okay, but we still, you know, regardless of them being invasive or not, they still are trees that make up the forest, right? And the code is very specific, you take it down, you put a certain caliber back. They're asking for a credit to reduce it in half, downslope, pretty close to where the wetlands are, so those trees are going to be working in that area to help, and the reason is to save $22,000 bucks, which really doesn't work for me. I mean, we have lots of applicants that come in here, talk about money, and our response is, we don't want to hear, but the school board doesn't want to spend $22,000 on a project that's way over $22,000 a tree cost. To me, it seems like a drop in the bucket, and we're giving a favor, or to an ask, to the next applicant comes in, is going to want the same exact ask.
Well, I don't, $22,000 is, it's real money.
I know it's real money, but, but we're talking pools, cabanas, and tennis courts.
No, I understand that, I understand that. No, just, let me just, it's real money, but in order, I think, in order for us to take that into consideration, unless I'm mistaken, we need to hear an argument of hardship.
Yeah.
And I don't hear a hardship argument, and I think the school district would have trouble making that argument, that they cannot afford to do this. So for me, that argument doesn't yet come into play, and for me, it's true that because of the dense, the density of this species where they exist has caused more trees than the applicant than a developer would normally have to take out, but the developer is taking those out to his own profit and his own benefit. There is, there is, to me, there is nothing in particular that by that process or through that logic, we ought to therefore be granting some special dispensation of reforesting just because the developer has chosen to carve a parcel out and take those trees out to his own benefit and turn a profit on the property. If, if, if the developer was coming in and saying, I'm going to take them out of the, out of the existing forest and help that part of that habitat, I would be on board with that argument, but I don't, I don't see it here.
See, that's a, that's a complicated matter, and I had this conversation with Steve, because how do you, how do you, how do you make the economics work, because it's going to be much more expensive to cut, take down extra trees, grab out the root systems.
It's fine, then, that's a, that's a capillary.
It would be much more expensive, the economics just did not, it just didn't work.
So don't, that's a capillary, so don't do it. But that doesn't, to me, that doesn't mean that you ought to get, that doesn't mean that you ought to get 50 percent credit on the trees you're taking out anyway.
Steve, I have a question about the areas of the fingers where some of the gray trees are indicated, like, you know, gray trees here, gray trees here. How densely wooded are those areas? And what do you deem the survivability rate of understory trees going in based on how densely wooded they are with what's going to remain?
I mean, the challenge, and one of the reasons why Norway maple is on New York State's invasive tree list, and it's going to be banned in, you know, I think, two years from now, where you can't even buy it anymore. You know, it's because of its growth habit, and as Bob mentioned, you know, it creates almost a, almost like bamboo, you know, it grows, you know, individual suckers, it's all one, one individual plant that, you know, feeds all the rest of them, and, you know, it prevents anything else from growing, and it gets very little wildlife use, you know, I mean, you know, there's some nesting behavior, and there's very limited food value and other, you know, features to it. You know, it's a problem nationwide, it's not restricted just to Newcastle, and that's why we put a provision in ordinance, you know, to deal with invasive trees and, you know, species as to creating awareness, you know, for people to understand that, you know, forests have to be managed, they're under threats just like any other, you know, natural system, and, you know, that's why from my perspective, I think it's important to encourage, you know, an applicant to remove them, you know, and then, and get some credit for doing that.
Okay, and again, the credit that's being sought is only for the invasive trees, and many more trees, there's 600-some-odd trees being cleared, so no credit for those, it would only be on, what, 144 of the invasive trees?
About the 607.
We had come up with 50 percent, it could be less, it could be a different percentage.
The precedent that we're setting here is anytime that anybody comes in, applicant comes in, and he's got a Norway maple on his property, and he decides that he needs to take it out, wants to take it out, he automatically gets a 50 percent cut.
No, no, 50 percent is something you can do to...
I know, but I...
...percentage, I mean, that could be...
Don't we set a precedent by giving this applicant, I mean, how do we say no to the next guy?
Well, I'm necessarily sure.
Maybe we want to make that policy statement, and maybe it ought to go under the code, but to me, it's...
But there's a benefit of removing the invasive trees, and...
But the trees have to, are coming out anyway. So our point is, you're taking out 144, they only want to put in 72, but you're taking out the 144 anyway, so, so I don't see the benefit.
I think you got to balance it with the fact that they're also adding 500 plus...
I, I understand that.
But the code requires that.
But the code requires that.
There's, there's no special, oh, thank you for doing that, the code requires that, they don't give credit for that in this particular argument.
To me, it's the benefit of removing invasive trees, you know, that...
But they're going to do it anyway, all right, I'm done.
Yeah, it's not...
Very fascinating discussion, and I think that, that...
That's behold, the eye, or the ear of the beholder, I guess, right?
No, I think that anyone who doesn't think it was fascinating, you know, shouldn't be sitting up here and, or down there, but it, it strikes me that Tom has a very good point, that, gee, if you were to take out other trees, you know, that are invasive in the wooded area that is closer to the, to the hill, you know, that that would be a benefit, because right now, even if they, if New York City, I'm sorry, New York State goes through with banning the trees in two years, there's still going to be enough that it's going to get reseeded by invasive species, it's just a question of what birds land there after having been somewhere else. So, you know, I think that, that the money could be spread out, and I could see giving the credit if, if during construction there was an effort to clear out or destroy, you know, $11,000 labor-wise and everything else, Norway maples and the rest of the forest, you know, so that the rest of the forest can, you know, can get a better position to have a more fuller canopy and everything else, so I could see a compromise, that's number one, but since that's probably not clearly legal, I think then the question is that we have to go before the, you know, the, go back to the town board and say, we need an ordinance change, you know, for Norway maples. We don't have to say it for everything, but it's for Norway maples because they're particularly, and bamboo, if you want to throw that in too, but, you know, type of thing, but, or Norway maples and anything that has the same kind of, you know, pernicious root structure. But I don't know how you do that in the time that we, that we have right now, except we could take a thing and say, this is, this is a, this is a prototype that we're doing as an example to see if it works out as we go forward, and if it doesn't, it won't be repeated.
Right. Well, we have the code before us, and I think Tom and Greg are correct in reading the code, so their interpretation is unless there is some sort of other benefit, you know, for us to trigger the, our discretion on this, they're not persuaded by it. I understand that, that's what the code says. So any thoughts on this?
Well, I, I'm, knowing the nature of Norway maples and how they're going to grow, you know, if you leave any of them in there, they're going to, they're going to continue to grow up again. So I guess it's a question, you know, of how many Norway maples you're really clearing out of there, and what benefit that would be if you don't get all of them, how many are, how many are left? And, and, you know, coming back to my question about how much ability there is in that land, how heavily wooded those fingers are in what will remain, you know, what the viability of putting in understory trees would be if there's a, if there's a big canopy of Norway maples, so...
But I would hope that no understory would be planted under Norway maple.
Well, they're so huge, and they're so dense, and they're so thick, and I don't know how many are in those fingers, so I'm trying to get an understanding for what the viability would be if we did go ahead with the extra 72 trees in those gray areas, would they survive given the cover of Norway maples that's, that exists? And I don't know the answer to that question.
What's the maximum in terms of what we can do in terms of discretion?
Yeah, so, thank you for asking, others, that relates to one of the points I wanted to make. The first point is that you don't have to decide this tonight, so I don't want you to feel like this is a decision that you have to arrive at this evening, you know, you have time to make this decision, it can come in your ultimate resolution. Secondly, whatever your decision is on it, you should enumerate the reasons for making that decision in your resolution, because actually, the code, you know, Steve has spoken to the legislative intent with respect to this provision, but the code itself is really sparse with respect to the standard by which you're judging this. It just says that the approving authority may, may reduce the total required tree replacement DBH where the trees proposed for removal include invasive species such as Norway maples. So it doesn't give you a hardship standard or, or any sort of, you know, other standard by which to decide whether you should grant the waiver or not grant the waiver. It also doesn't necessarily speak to a 50 percent waiver, it could be 100 percent, it could be 1 percent. It's, it's what the board decides. So you have a lot of discretion, but however you exercise that, you should make sure that it's clear on the record for the precedent purpose.
But the foundational language is in the code that says 50 percent.
Not 50 percent.
No, no, 50 percent.
Anywhere from discretion to...
You have the discretion to reduce the total required tree replacement where there's...
Our discretion is how much?
Where there's invasive species included in the tree removal proposal.
Whether we do and by how much we do.
Right, so we could actually give 100 percent credit if we were so inclined, but I, I'm persuaded by, you know, the arguments I've heard from Greg and Tom and Dick, and that is, we can leave this now to the applicant, and that is, come back to us, give us an argument, a stronger argument, one that really meets muster for all of us in terms of why you would earn that discretion. And I think, from what I'm hearing, it needs to be, and I, as I recall, I don't know my point, Jerry's got it, but as I recall, it was really toward the button hook entrance where the, the density of the Norway maples was most extreme. So again, if the applicant on their own wishes to remove those, as we've heard from Sheila and others, that that's what you really need to do with Norway maples, get them out of here, then we could actually consider a credit even more than 50 percent, if that helps. But basically, leave it to the applicant, come back to us, tell us what you're going to do to make, I'm getting way ahead of you, right?
Yeah.
Okay, 0 to, 0 to 100 percent, exactly, exactly. But come back, I, I think the applicant should come back and say, look, this is what we can do, this is what we propose, and this is why we're asking for the discretionary credit.
Maybe there's a way that we can come to a decision, and that is that if, Sheila's correct, that if the, if that, if the density is too high, it'll start to take the undergrowth, understory trees away, maybe rather than getting the monetary benefit, we take the reduction of 20-some-odd thousand dollars and just apply it to removing Norway maples.
Again, we leave that to the applicant, whichever way you want to do it.
And where you do it, how you do it, be good to know, but I think that would be an interesting proposal.
Yep.
Because that'll help our trees survive, and it'll help us get to a point where we can redo it.
Yeah, because to Dick and Sheila's point, I mean, these things, they're not going away, they're not going to stop multiplying, so if you don't pull them out, you're going to have a problem in the area anyway.
Well, that's, that's, I appreciate that personally, I appreciate that thought, so...
And also, not the least of which, you're going to have problems later on with your septic.
Exactly, so maybe that's the win-win that gets us to where we want to be.
I think that'd be a, I think that's an interesting idea, and come back with specifically where you would do that, and how many trees, and it'd be good to...
What the cost is.
Good to think about.
I mean, I think what Randy's saying is if, that we were requesting a $22,000 credit, we take that $22,000 and we identify in the field where these trees are and have them approved by Mr. Coleman, we get qualified arborists to provide a proposal of what the cost is for that, and have it under supervision of Mr. Coleman.
Instead of putting in 72 more trees, take the $22,000 that would cost and take out in the...
X number, right.
X number of...
Labeled as such and such, numbered such and such, right.
I think that's good.
And I think, as I recall, there were tons of saplings too, that were unregulated up there.
Okay, good, okay, good. Okay, thank you, that was good.
Moving on. Trees, so we've also, you know, gone through, and we provided erosion control plan for, again, it's, this would be the southern part of the site, and we have the northern part of the site, and of course, be what, you know, as code requires, the grading limit lines will all be staked by the surveyors, there would be orange, orange construction fence going up, orange silt fence going up, there'd be roadway diversions to kick the, the muddy water off the road during construction and capture it. Any slope that gets graded would immediately be stabilized with straw mats, seeded straw mats, there'd be redundant erosion control measures, so we think we have that pretty well covered. We also have a construction sequence on how the development would get, would get put together. This was just our slope map that we had done, we were asked to study the slopes, and one of the things noted in the EAF Part Two was, you know, how are we going to deal with these? And typically what we do, obviously, we identify this grading limit line, again, you can see it, it's hard to see, but this is it, going around, any place the darker, the darker the patch, the steeper it is, we try to avoid them when we can, and when we do have to, when we do have to regrade them, again, we immediately put the slope stabilization mat on them so they stay stable, and of course, that's the short term, and in the long term, all the slopes get planted, so they remain stable. We've gone through with the board, we talked about sightline distance to, the board was concerned with some of the neighbors that were north of the project, the project is in this area here, and there are some high points upon Crow Hill and Indian Hill, and, oh, I think it's about a mile and a half away, but we talked about what the sightlines may be, of course, in the summertime when everything's in leaf, probably not too much of a problem, when leaves are down, you may get filtered views, but that was one of the reasons that we came back with the board, if the board will recall, where we talked about moving the homes off of the high points, putting them a little bit lower, trying to keep those trees around them so they look established, so we worked through that. And, you know, these are just, this was the roadway engineering plans that were developed in conjunction with Campbell Engineering in our office, you know, this is our 1,200-foot road, if you slice this road down the middle, and you cut the profile, the dashed line indicates what the topography is doing, and the solid line is the vertical geometry that the town recommends that we have to have a nice smooth roadway surface. As you can see, it's a, it's a good site, we pretty much follow the existing grade the entire way. This was, Bob always has us look at the sightlines from the various driveways, and as you're driving down the road, and there will have to be some easements, they'll be identified on the plat map, but there will have to be some easements that have to be kept clear as this driver is driving down the road and he's viewing of another vehicle coming. So when they cross private property, that's the area you see in red, and those areas would be the subject of the sightline easements, that'll show up on the final flat. These are the driveway profiles, and again, most of the driveways, you know, they pretty much follow the grade, Lot 1 is maybe an exception that, you know, we, we have a little filling going on, but pretty much all of the driveways pretty much follow the existing grades.
Is that going to create a need for a culvert underneath?
No, it's on the grade, and we have that graded out, there's no culverts under the driveways. There's no culverts under the driveways.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, these are driveways, not road sections.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And this was just the utility plan that Campbell Engineering is currently working on this. And it, of course, you know, for final approval, he'll have it all worked out, but essentially what he's doing is he's extending the town water main and he's bringing it up, I guess this would be the west side of the road, he's going to bring it up the west side of the road, and then he's going to loop it around and he's going to tie it back. So he's going to tie it in at Gary and then he's going to tie it back in at Sabina. On the other side of the road would be the electric and the, and the telephone services. Septics are all shown. The darker areas are the primary areas that had to be modified slightly for health department requirements that Campbell Engineering had taken care of. And what you're seeing in all these blue areas, and these are the stormwater structures and all the stormwater features of the plan, and that is what Bill Duckman is going to talk about.
Is the electric, are you?
Yes. Hand it over to Bill. I'm looking for any questions.
Good evening. I'm Bill Duckman from WSP, and we were tasked with developing stormwater management plan for the property. Okay, so as you can see upon the screen, the total property size is about 20.5 acres, and our job was to figure out what the rainfall and runoff was going to change due to the areas that are no longer green, which is about half the property, about 10.8 acres. So in doing this, we had to keep in mind that we had to develop a system that was going to have to meet the requirements of three different agencies. Town will review and approve it, DEC will review and approve it, and the DEP, because we're in the city watershed, will also review and approve it. So we're getting triple reviews and approves for the stormwater system, and we had to design things to meet the objectives of the different agencies. The primary objective for the town was that we could not have an increase in runoff leaving the property in terms of peak rate or volume. So as a result of the development, we couldn't have anything more leaving the property than was leaving under existing conditions of undeveloped woodland. DEC and DEP have some water quality calculations that are done, and they, based on those calculations, they end up defining how much water needs to be retained and stored. So for example, with the DEC/DEP calculation for runoff reduction, we were required to do about 10,000 cubic feet, and what we have proposed is about 16,000. So we've got about 60% more. We had to do a required storage reduction, and based on that, we needed to provide about 86,000 feet of storage, cubic feet, and we provided 144 cubic feet. And the main reasons we're exceeding what is needed for DEC and DEP is to meet the town requirements, which requires no runoff increases. We've done considerable testing at the site. We have about 30 test pits. We did 16 infiltration tests, which were observed by town as well as DEP personnel. And during the course of the testing, we never ran into groundwater. The soils are very good for infiltrating. The problem is, in a lot of cases, the bedrock is shallow. So the bedrock became the limiting factor, and the septic design took up most of the desirable places. So for doing the stormwater, we were left with working in places where we could find sufficient depth as well as keeping with 100 feet away. That's what these areas are around the septic fields. DEP requires 100-foot separation to keep the stormwater infiltration units away from the septic leach fields. The analysis and the design we've done works for 100-year storm event. Precipitation for that is about 9.28 inches in 24 hours. By comparison, I don't know if you recall, about two weeks ago on the 24th, which is a Thursday, we had a pretty big storm event here. That was only about one or two inches of rain. So designing for nine, 9.3 inches is a lot of water. So what we ended up doing in summary, in terms of peak runoff, which is the highest rate at which water would flow off the property, under existing conditions, it was about 54 CFS, cubic feet per second. And that would be, for our perspective, about 24,500 gallons a minute. And you figure, if you have a garden hose running at your home, it's probably about five gallons a minute. So we're talking about some large numbers of water.
Are there differences in design based on the season of the year? I mean, two inches of rain in the winter with frozen soils is a lot different than two inches of rain in the summertime when it's fully leafed out, and you have lawns and grass and understory and.
Right.
I'm just asking, I don't know.
No, the standard does not necessarily take into any kind of seasonal effects. It basically uses a designed storm event and the surface cover, which would really be for a, a non-winter type condition. That's the standard which everybody uses.
It's something for you engineers to reconfigure. Seems to me two inches in January was real different.
So anyway.
I have a related, related questions. Bob's pointed out something that is interesting, that this last summer, we had a lot of gully washers, and they were intense. And so is that likely to change the, all of the criteria? How often does the state change the criteria?
In speaking to some engineers, you might know too, Bill, they're changing the actual, I'm not quite sure what the name of it is, but they're trying to change the hydrographs and the flows to take into account the more intense storm events. The older ones have been used up to this time.
Yeah, what they're doing.
It was only 24-hour period, you might be able to explain it better, but they're making it in a shorter duration, which is going to increase the amount of water. So they are taking into account, and don't be surprised, within the next four or five years, when DEC comes out with their new regs, all the engineers will have to download that into their systems when they do their stormwater analysis, and you can speak on it too as well.
Yeah, what's been happening is they've been increasing the intensity for the designed storm events.
Yeah, they did that just recently.
So not too long ago, the 100-year storm was about 7.2 inches. Now it's up at 9.3. So that's how they're accounting for some of these things in a relatively easy manner.
Right.
Whether they get into any more involved adjustments remains to be seen.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's a real question, actually, because again, I've, I've expressed concern about the neighbors to the west and where you have all those pits and areas for, for stormwater collection. Again, you have some homes that are, you know, downstream and downhill and fairly steeply downhill. So I'm concerned with any kind of issues with their, their homes in the event of a large storm situation. And again, I, I just don't know what the functionality is between one season or another. Just anecdotally, we know that there's a difference. And it's, it's been a concern of mine. We've had unfortunate experiences in other parts of town where things have been designed, and yet we hear afterwards that we still have problems with people who are downstream and downhill, who have got now wet basements, they never had wet basements before. And it's, it's great to have, you know, engineers tell us how that will never happen, it shouldn't happen. We've got all the tests, we've got all the models, and yet these people are sitting in six inches of water in their basements. So it's a concern.
Well, we've taken a great deal of effort to try to make sure that doesn't happen, and we'll get into that in a few minutes. So anyways, in terms of the peak runoff under existing conditions, peak rate would be about 54 CFS under existing conditions. With the property developed as proposed and no stormwater management controls, the peak runoff would go up to about 80 CFS. But then with the controls we have proposed, it drops it down to 39 CFS. So we're reducing the peak from the existing conditions. In terms of volume, existing conditions is about 5.6 acre feet. That's approximately 1.84 million gallons of water. Proposed goes up to 7.28 acre feet without stormwater controls. With stormwater controls, it goes down to 4.32. So again, we're reducing it down to below what happens under existing conditions. The way we're doing that is by a number of different approaches. We're doing infiltration chambers, of which the water is set there, and there's a set in here, set in here. Water is collected and goes into a pretreatment unit to remove sediment and debris. In this case, we're looking at what units are called Vortec units. And then it gets into the infiltration units, which are subgrade units, and allows the water to seep into the ground, thereby reducing water going off the property. So we have underground infiltrators. We also have an infiltration basin right over here, which accepts the majority of the water that is being infiltrated. The other method we're using is storage vaults. You see a number of banks of those vaults, and basically, those are set up to receive the runoff and then let it bleed out at a slower rate over a longer period of time. And then we also have a detention basin, which functions the same way.
I want to go back one thing, just want to check one thing for sure. Over here on this property, where is the, the septic field located?
You're pointing at just about right there. Oh, this property?
Yeah.
I'm not sure about that property.
It's blank.
Yeah, we don't have it. The, the, the building is so close to the property line, so it must be in the front.
Well, yeah, I think we need to check that because, you know, we're, we're very close to the house with the 100-foot. All right? And that may or may not be an issue, but if the septic field is back here or here in this corner, I don't know when these houses were built relative to the code we have. So hopefully, there would be a setback of, I don't know, 20 feet or 50 feet, whoever the number is, you know, from the property line to the septic field. But would you please make sure that this 100-foot line does not impede upon their septic?
Well, the 100-foot line is a setback of infiltrating stormwater, setback from leach fields. It's not a separating distance between leach fields themselves.
Well, gee, if, if it's going to impact this area with, with additional water, then I think it isn't an, an impact potentially.
And, well.
And I've raised this before.
Yes. And the slope of this area that's here, the water that's going into the ground shouldn't be going over into this area here. The slope is taking it down this way.
Down towards the west.
Just for clarification, that's a septic.
It's a septic field.
Yeah.
It's not a absorption field for the stormwater.
Okay. But still, if it's correct that the water is likely to go to the bottom of the page, then I'm not concerned about it.
It is. I'm not certain, but they have definite, they have definition of separation distances based on the county, and that's what we go by, based on their design.
And you checked, but you don't know where the septic fields are in the other one, so I don't know if you have the separation.
I'm not doing the septic design either, so I can't talk too much to it.
I'm using the broad U, I'm sorry.
They can chill it just to make sure.
But you also got to remember, the, the septic leach fields are going to get much less water than the stormwater infiltration banks. So, but we'll, someone on the project team will check that out.
Thank you.
Okay, so, you know, we're collecting water from the roofs, driveways, roads, some lawn areas, and it's processed, like I said, through Vortec units that are in front of infiltrators so it keeps sediment and debris out of the infiltration banks. In front of the vaults, we have sand filter. So again, it keeps debris and sediment out of the units we're using to manage the water and will increase their longevity in, in time between maintenance.
Do you know if these are maintained by the homeowner or the HOA?
HOA.
I believe it's HOA.
HOA will have the responsibility, yeah.
Okay, and how are the basins going to be designed? They're going to be designed for slow infiltration?
This one up here is for infiltration into the ground. This one here is for dent, detention and gradual bleed off.
Okay, so the one that's here, it doesn't have gradual bleeding? It's, it's more open and fast?
It's designed, we're not taking any credit for infiltration from this basin here. That's being used primarily for storage. Some may seep into the ground.
Okay, but what about the basin over here?
That's for infiltration.
That's for infiltration. And that's going to be, how much water is in that? You said.
I think around 14,000 cubic feet.
14,000 cubic feet? So that's a, now that's 137,000, you know, gallons?
Is that a swimming pool? You're putting in sizes for us?
Okay, so some of the other things, that's how we're going to manage the water. And, but the things that we looked at were also impacts to adjacent properties. And what turns out as a result of our, this design is there's going to be less runoff coming down over the surface from the hillside onto the properties along Gary Drive, primarily because currently, there's like a ridge that comes along through here. So everything on this side of the ridge goes down to those properties. Now, the only thing that's going to go down to this lot here is this small area here. The only thing running off of this lot will be this area here. But the basin here, there's only going to be a sliver going down into that lot. So in terms of surface runner, water runoff going down onto those neighboring properties, it's going to be considerably less.
Oh, we're concentrating infiltration on these areas. And what do you, what did you find with DP5, DP4, DP3 in terms of your soils and test holes or whatever?
The other thing that we did based on concerns by the board, we've proposed a curtain drain to start about this location here, come around along the downside of the basin and, and right about there, because that's where the infiltration structure stopped, and then tie into our drainage system.
So that helps me.
So the, let's see if I can work this. There we go.
And who proposed that?
Going backwards is.
Who proposed the curtain wall?
Well, the board expressed a concern.
Our board?
Your board.
Okay, good.
About impact to the neighbors, and that was the, one of the solutions we came up with. Did I go back somewhere?
What's the expected longevity with maintenance of these systems?
Okay.
Pardon me? What's the expected longevity of these systems? I have a shock line, I was reading through all the Coltech stuff to see that there's only a one-year limited guarantee on their product. But with proper maintenance, what are we looking at in terms of how long are these going to last or can they last? Should they last?
I mean, I would expect them to.
I was surprised at their plastic, I was.
Forever.
Yeah, 40, 50-year lifespan at least.
Okay.
And then they can be repaired, I would assume, redet.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't getting through complaints. 40, 50 years is probably safe, though.
Uh-oh, just lost the pointer. Well, what I was looking to try to find was a, we have a cross section of the trench drain, the curtain drain that's going through there. Basically, bedrock in general is five, six, seven feet low grade, maybe shallower. So the bottom of the trench is going to go right on along the top of the bedrock. On the downslope side, it'll have an impermeable geotech fabric or barrier, plastic. And on the uphill side, there'll be a filter fabric that allows water to seep in, and it'll extend up to the surface so that even some surface water may get into it, if it's not covered up with leaves and other debris. So that will.
That'll help quite a bit.
Reduce the.
Good idea.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Very good idea.
I'm not going to try to zoom in, but here's the, that's the detail for the curtain drain.
Mm-hmm.
Nothing, nothing.
You don't have to zoom in.
I'm trying to show my skills here, but that ain't working.
Yeah, well, you know.
We appreciate your attempt to make it more lively, but it's okay.
And then the other thing we looked at is the drainage coming off the site and getting into the catch basins here, because there is a 24-inch diameter pipe that comes, we're not sure of the exact route, but we know it starts here, we know it ends down, down here.
Where's the pointer?
Yeah, where's the pointer? I can't see it.
Is it on?
Starts here, intersection, and ends right down here. And this route here is hypothesized. There may be a easement somewhere on the town records that shows where it goes, but right now, that's a concern because it's partially filled up with a lot of sediment and stuff, it doesn't operate function the way that it says.
Yeah, Bob has something to say on that.
Just to clarify that Randy, myself, met with the Commissioner of Public Works, and we came to an agreement to what we're deciding to do with the pipe. Since it's filled in pretty much about 80% with debris, I believe, if I'm wrong, Randy has agreed to clean out the pipe and TV inspect the pipe. And then he will give the TV inspection to the Commissioner, the Commissioner will review it, and then he'll decide on his own to see if he has to re-line it on the DPC, on the DPW side. So basically, Mr. Cactus said as who will be responsible for the clean-out and the TV inspection, and we'll formalize that in the resolution.
Yeah, the only addition to that is we capped the contribution at 15,000, which Jerry thought was plenty to go in and vacuum it out and take a picture, so.
Yeah, sure.
So the point where I was going with this is, right now, there's a drainage area, there's the green pointer right there. There's a drainage area around here that contributes water to that catch basin. If the batteries run low.
Oh, look at that.
Okay. And within that existing watershed, there's a section of the existing property that's sort of like this, that comes down into this area. So under existing conditions, the property contributes about 2 CFS to that drain and that pipe. With this proposed stormwater management system, because of the way we're going to manage the water, what's going to get released to that pipe is going to reduce from 2 CFS down to .2 CFS. So under the proposed conditions, we're going to be putting less water into the pipe. And we did look at the capacity of the pipe, and if it's clean, it should have a capacity of about 55 CFS, and that little watershed contributes to it is only about 35 peak runoff.
Good. Bob, did you have comments on the plan?
I guess.
You want the short version?
Yep. It looks a lot worse than what it is. And I must say, I reviewed the stormwater report, and it's, in my opinion, very good. It's all the points that we needed, but nonetheless, when they look at things, they do have comments over them briefly. I broke them up into several sections. First section is on its division flat.
Do you have these built?
Yep.
SP1, SP2, SP3 has to do with basically the bounds of the existing drainage easements, which should be shown on the flat, and it's a boundary of the site easements. And there's some intersecting point which I find different records on. On SP3, which is the intersection of Gary Drive and Bonnup, doesn't seem to match up, but I'll leave that up to the discretion and confirmation of this land surveyor to make that final determination. SP4, obviously, the proposed road name has to be approved by the board. SP5, the table entitled Septic Design should indicate a lot areas, for some reason, that was left out. SP6, the, for some reason, there was a disconnect between what you call them, the protected buffer areas, I believe you want to call them protected buffer areas, and the plat had another name, so just straighten that out. Moving on to SP7, same thing, just coordinate what the protected buffer areas should correspond on all the sheets. SP8, I would like to see all the subdivision names and adjacent lot numbers and file maps adjacent to the subdivision, makes it a lot easier to reference in the future for the building department. And also to the surveyor, should indicate where he's planning on putting the concrete monuments, because this is going to be a town dedicated road, and we always need monuments for other surveyors to come into the future to ascertain what the property line is. I recommend SP1 through 7 be incorporated on the ITP. Then I got my stormwater comments. ST1, it appears to be, I need clarification on Pond 10B. I don't know or I can't tell whether that 19, see if this has been included into the total design point. SP2, I would recommend showing the Hydrocat summary tables, how you determine the drainage areas for 7, 8, and 9, based on the peak and volume flows. ST3, regarding the stormwater hydraulic analysis, Bill, I would just like to see the ones for the town system. And I think the two key points I'd like to see on there is the design pipe capacity and the maximum pipe capacity for each system in each run. So that would dictate to me, and I could tell in an easy way, to see if they're going to be surcharged. ST4, provide profiles of all the stormwater conveyance systems, which will indicate will crossings. ST5, basically, since it's in the east of Hudson, obviously, it's got to get the DEC acknowledgment form. ST6, obviously, it's going to need a DEP has, what's your status on cementals to the DEP? Because obviously, they have to approve the stormwater as well.
Well, the approach was to make sure we had everything covered from the town aspects and incorporate those comments before submitting to these agencies.
Okay. ST7, ST8 are standard maintenance and performance funds that we need under the code for the stormwater facilities. And then you get to the roadway and driveway comments, RD1, RD2, RD3, have to do with the stopping site distance. I think they should give a little bit of information, more information, to determine the elevations for the stopping site distances along the profiles themselves. RD4, these are just certain things that should be incorporated onto the typical roadway section. RD5, I would recommend that you show a New York State box beam guide rail in accordance with DOT specs. And by the way, they only make galvanized now, you can't get rustic. They've been disallowed for many, many years. RD6, all the roadway plans that show any type of structural components must be signed by a New York State licensed professional engineer, all the respectable landscape architects. Utility comments, the proposed storm sewer construction plans, SW1 through SW5 should indicate the rim elevation and inward elevations. Basically, I'd like to see a standalone plan where you put the station in, elevation invert on the actual plan itself. I know you have a table where you did the analysis, but that doesn't help when you're trying to locate them in the field, so I would put them all on the plan set. U2, the plan should indicate the location of the existing water main, type of bond of Gary Drive and Sabina Road. U3, the plan should indicate the location of the existing storm sewer rim elevations, inward elevations at the intersections as well. U4, all proposed water mains shall be labeled 8-inch diameter, DPC cement line, class 52 water main. And I believe, Randy, we're still meeting with Jerry to finalize the order.
Yeah.
So that's not finalized as of yet. U5, obviously, it's going to require, we're just the county department of health approval for the water main, and obviously, it's going to need a street opening permit from the Commissioner. And then we have general comments, general GC1, basically, it's going to need engineers' estimates for all the improvements that will be dedicated to the term, including all the private stormwater improvements with 3% inspection fee. And GT2, the applicant shall submit the following documents in convertible form. This is a general list of all the items that we're going to require as far as declarations for the stormwater maintenance, declaration of street maintenance, declaration of street maintenance security agreement, sideline easement, waterman easement, and every offer of session, and this is something Jennifer and I will spend countless hours on.
And that should also include the protected buffer area, restricted covenants.
I forgot that, that is correct, that's my fault. And GC3 is basically just general notes we like to see on the plans, which cover all the types of things that we need to do for inspections, as-built, and certifications, and notice of termination.
Steve, you had some comments, I believe, besides the 50%?
I think my comments have been, this is one other item, that within the tree code regarding maintenance and monitoring, when there's 10 or more trees being removed, it's a minimum of five years, but the planning board has a discretion to go up to a maximum of 10 years. I'd recommend a 10 years originally because of the quantity of trees and shrubs that are going in and the care that's involved in maintaining those. And it would still be my recommendation that the board consider more than five years. And I think in this case, 10 years is warranted.
And the applicant has some objection to that.
They expressed an objection to prefer to keep it at five years.
Right. The concern was that if the developer turns it over 2020? Not so easy, it's easier to say. Oh, microphone's here, sorry.
Thanks.
Bill dropped the mic.
Thanks. The original concern was that if a developer developed a site, that there's apparently a bond, right, a 35%, there was 35% bond, that'll be kept for that, that to keep a 35% bond for a developer for 10 years, a long time. So we can have a 10-year monitoring plan, but I think at some point, we have to give the developer back the bond, or require the HOA to grow it over 10 years in order to supplant it, or something like that.
Should we reduce the amount of the bond over time?
I think the board did discuss that in past instances, to do it the same way we do the bonds for the street improvements, where they come in every so often to Steve's satisfaction, and then he recommends that it be reduced to a certain amount. You can do the same technique.
I thought that's what we did, yeah.
There's some vehicle to be able to do that, so the developers regain the capital.
We should make it clear in the resolutions.
Yes, that will be addressed in the resolution.
Okay, thanks, that's a concern.
I think they've addressed all the other prior comments in the plan.
Any comments for the public on this application? Yes?
Please come forward.
Come on up.
No, please come forward to the microphone.
Sorry.
That way we can record everything.
Okay. Hi, I'm Mary Bounds, I live at 17 Gary Drive. We're at the, you know, to the right.
All right, over here, one of these?
Right. We actually sit down lower than on the other end, and I would just like to ask, you know, why it was determined not to put stormwater drainage facilities or whatever on that end? You know, what the reasoning was behind that, because we actually sit down lower than the other end of the street.
Okay, now, shoot, help me out here. Your house is here?
I believe it. I think it might be the one to the right.
Okay.
But those houses actually sit down lower. I would just like to know, you know, how you determine not to put those, the stormwater treatment there.
Near your house?
Well, you know, I think we discussed this the other night at the meeting. That green area, I believe this is your home right here?
It's either that one or the one to the right.
You need to get to the microphone.
I think it might be the one to the right.
And our grading limit line is right here. This entire area is a high point, and it's being undisturbed, so there was no need to do anything here. This is remaining natural, this is not going to change.
So we don't, there will be no more runoff coming down there?
No more than is now.
Okay, okay.
All right, I just was curious about that.
Anything else, sir?
Okay, thank you.
Good. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
I'm Chris Fraro, I live at 27 Gary. So I see we have a retention pond, and we also have a, what do we call it again? An infiltration pond.
Show us, which one is yours?
Sure, 27, I believe is, let's see, pond right here, right there. So I'm right behind the retention pond. So which is it? It's where retaining water or infiltrating the water?
It depends on which one it is. So the first one to the north is infiltration.
This one right here, which I think is behind your property, if this is your property, that's an infiltration basin, so that'll allow water to seep into the ground.
Okay.
And then the other one to the south of it is a detention basin.
Okay, so we're catching a lot of the water, we're focusing it into this area, and it's going to flow into the infiltration pond basin, soaking to the ground.
Correct.
We're downstream of all that, and there is a fair amount of groundwater, and it all heads down to us, and we're wondering how that's really going to get stopped, since it's going to be infiltrated here.
Two ways. First of all, under existing conditions, you have an area that comes back to about here, where surface water runs off down the hillside to your property. With this proposed development, the area that's going to run into your property is this. So surface water runoff coming down into your property is going to be cut just by area, probably about 20, only 20% of what it is now. Second of all, the infiltration basin will let water seep into the ground over a period of time, but we've also proposed a curtain drain between the basin and these properties that will pick up any excessive water that's going through the soils to keep it from going further downhill.
And that will drain down around?
And the basin, the curtain drain will come out down here.
Okay, and that will then feed into the stormwater system going down Gary?
Stormwater system, right.
So you're saying it's going to be less than what we have now going down?
Correct.
Okay.
Because the ridge of that property, they show, the ridge is farther back, so you had a lot more water going in that direction.
Okay.
So, yeah, so you're going to get less surface water runoff, and because of that curtain drain, any groundwater seepage coming down through the riverbed is going to get captured and taken off down here.
Okay, but net effect still is, there'll be less water that's coming back around than there is even now. Because we have several of our neighbors that have serious damage to their driveways, the culverts. It's a struggle for me after every major storm to try and clear, clear all the sediment that's coming in.
From about this point down here, all the homes have driveways with a culvert underneath them. So, you know, the water runs down the channel through those culverts.
But what we're saying is, the water will be less.
Yes.
And we won't get these major events where we'll see overflow.
You're still going to see major events from just the conditions in the neighborhood.
Unless I'm mistaken, there will, no, I've got, okay, there will be more water in these culverts because it's being diverted off-site, correct? Captured and diverted off-site. There'll be more water coming this way, but there will be less water coming into the back of these properties.
So that's my concern, because we're seeing a lot of driveways getting washed out.
No, that is correct.
The peak flow will be less coming off-site. There may be, over time, based on the seepage and release of water from these structures, it may stretch out a few days at a low rate coming down through here, but that's not going to be the major surcharges that you see during large storm events.
Well, now I'm confused, because I thought we were going to inspect this existing storm sewer here and clean it out in order to take the excess capacity, more than is there now.
Well, we're looking to restore the capacity of that pipe.
Right, but the existing capacity is apparently okay, because there's not that much demand. So you'd be increasing the demand through that pipe, and that's why you're cleaning out the pipe?
We're cleaning out the pipe because when we sat with Jerry, he wanted to clean out the pipe. We agreed to contribute to that as, you know, part of, part of objective two is to be a good neighbor and...
It's backing up on the point of why you're... I understand what Jerry wants, Jerry gets.
Right, right. But I mean, it's the bandwidth of that pipe.
It's current condition, with large storm events, just the existing watershed coming down to that's going to cause, it doesn't have the capacity. When it's cleaned, it should have the capacity.
And that will increase the capacity, what's going down, what's going down now?
It'll keep it in the pipe rather than having it overflow at this intersection.
Effectively, what you'll see is, you won't see that surge. You won't see that surge during a big rainstorm. What you'll see is, it'll be captured, and the flow will be consistently much slower than it would be in a surge, but maybe over a number of days. So it may take a week for all the water, I don't know, Bill will tell me, I'm guessing.
But the immediate benefit would be to the back of the property, where you no longer get as much surface flow.
And groundwater is also going to be intercepted.
That's right. So I agree with that.
I'd like to point out one thing, just to, you know, to wrap this sort of up, is that we're protecting water from this area from going that way at a higher rate than now. And in fact, Bill is saying less, it's a lesser rate. However, that does not preclude any real change in a flashy storm, you know, where the rain comes down one or two inches and hits your backyard, and then goes all around your house and everything like that. That's all on your property and...
But we've, all of us have already spent a fair amount of time and money.
I'm sure you have, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want to raise expectations too high.
I got you, I got you. What if there's a breach? Is there any sort of backup to a breach in this holding system?
Breach of what, the basin? Breach of what, the basins or the pipes?
Yeah, the basins, yeah. Is there any pervious liner in?
No, there's not a liner, but these are really dug into the ground as opposed to being bermed up and having a high berm to hold the water in.
It's not a dam, so to speak.
Does the soil have a high permability or a low permability?
I'd say moderate. I mean, we did a lot of testing, and it wasn't low, but it wasn't real high, so...
Well, I have another comment, another comment. The curtain drain is really, is a sand, is a trench that's dug down almost to the bedrock, or just to the bedrock, and it's filled with coarse sand?
We're doing gravel.
Gravel, okay, it's going to be filled, full of gravel. And down at the bottom, there will be a pipe that has perforations. The size of the gravel is good, because gravel won't be able to get into the pipe through the perforations. And so the water will come and hit that sand, gravel barrier, and the way it gets out, the most relief will be through that pipe, which then goes, as you pointed out before, to the 25-inch sewer, the thing. So that's, that's a protection, you know, for keeping the water flow becoming less, if I understand it correctly, from what these gentlemen have said.
Maybe we should look to the detail after all.
Well, it protects that.
It's only a one-dimensional, it should be an isometric.
That flows over the bedrock, that's what catches it.
So we're going to have that, and then that water will be diverted back and around, and I'm still concerned, since we're catching that water and diverting it back and around, we're going to end up with an increased flow through the storm sewer system going down Gary Drive.
Those cisterns, right, hold the water, and then slowly release it. And they're built to what spec?
Yeah, they're, they're going to work with a 100-year storm event.
100-year storm event. That's the criteria, criteria, right?
That's what we use for design.
Yeah. All right. Maintenance on these systems? What kind of maintenance is really required on these systems?
What we have specked out is a...
You need to stand up to the mic.
Okay. What we have specked out in front of each of the infiltration chambers is a VorTeq unit to capture the sediment and any debris before it gets into those chambers. For the vaults, we've specked out sand filters. Those would probably be checked at least once a year, and if maintenance was needed, then that would need to be done.
As part of the approvals, we usually require an actual maintenance schedule that is filed with the town, and we check, so that makes sure that the maintenance is performed.
One of the conditions in the town engineer's memo was the maintenance plan.
Right, and that will be the responsibility of the homeowners association.
And you would have to approve that language for the homeowners association?
Yes.
So there is maintenance, and it will be done by the homeowners association.
Okay, very good.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir, come on.
Yes, Jonathan Freeman, he said into the microphone. Jonathan Freeman at 2 Sabina Road. I apologize, I got here late. Was anything to discuss about when this project is going to start and when it's going to be finished?
Well, it won't start until it's approved, and that might be, you know, in fairly short term, I guess, and then they'll have to go through the permits and get building permits. I have no idea what the construction sequence is at this point, we haven't gotten to that.
Do you have a developer?
We don't, so we haven't, I'll answer that. Do I want to stand up the mic?
Sure.
Come on, we'll share the mic.
I just got rid of my chain.
The process would be that we would get preliminary approval. We go through a public hearing, preliminary approval by the board. Once we get preliminary approval, we're going to go back to school administration and council, and we have to go through certain processes to get the school represented. Once we get the school represented, we will then go out to developers, and once a developer has it in hand, my guess, it will be, I would say, fairly quickly, because all this work has been done ahead of time, which is good or bad, depending how you look at it, where you are, in terms of getting going, but also good, because we were able to set the site for the builder, so the builder can't start, you know, putting up condominiums and high rises, and that's the plan. So that's the responsible plan he has to put in the ground. So that would be the process. So as soon as that happens here, then we make that on your process.
How long do you think it would take to go through the school's procedures?
Fairly quickly, I would say, within 30 days is...
That would be 30 days? So approval...
To get council to work 30, 60 days, yeah, something like that, yeah.
Okay, so approval would be 30 days with this board, plus or minus, maybe 45, then another 30 or 45 with the school, and then there's a contracting process, which would be 60 to 90, I would guess?
And you solicited bids yet?
No, 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 haven't even priced it. We're not doing anything until we really, we receive preliminary approval, because we want to make sure we have all the approvals in line in order to go market properly, otherwise we're misrepresenting, so we've got to be careful about that.
We also need to come back to this board and satisfy all the conditions of final approval, all these various maintenance agreements. That's going to take a little time, and Bill also...
Another 60 days.
And Bill also needs to go to DEP and DEC, so that's going to take a little bit of time.
Another 60 days.
That's going to be 60 days.
We're talking about nine months or so.
Six to nine months. If they break around, I would think.
More.
Next spring.
Next spring, by the time they break around and get financing together, and, you know, they start closing with, you know, silt fences, et cetera, yeah, things like that. Good?
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, anyone else?
I have one more comment, which I might like to put in my memo, but because of the PAT protocols that the Fish and Wildlife Service and New York State DUC requires, there's restrictions on when tree clearing can occur. So I think for the resolution, language should be placed so that it's clear that, you know, there cannot be any clearing between April and October, you know, those are years.
Sheila, you had a question?
I do. It pertains to the development coverage chart, which I think is page two of the big, of the big package of drawings. There's an item that refers to tennis paddle ball or swimming pool for additional development coverage. Is this meant to indicate that a homeowner could interchangeably put in a pool or a tennis court or a paddle court?
Well, you know, I think that's, that's on the town's form, when we fill out the coverage worksheet.
It's called...
So that's, that's the town's form. I believe that's what we're referring to, is the coverage calculations worksheet.
So everyone likes to see the actual worksheet on the plan?
No, but what I'm referring to here is that it's allotted at 900 square feet per lot, but a tennis court is 7,200 square feet, and I, I don't want to give the impression that as of right, a homeowner can come in and put a tennis court here.
Well, that's a good point. Is it paddle or?
It says tennis, paddle ball, or swimming pool, and it's allotted at 900 square feet, and I would even question whether 900 is sufficient for a pool and the kind of deckwork that people like to put around a pool.
Well, here she is. Could you answer that question, please?
Could you repeat the question? Are we talking about the development coverage chart? And the line item that's marked as tennis, paddle ball, or swimming pool? And it's allotted a 900-square-foot chunk of development. Is this meant, a tennis court, you know, is 7,200 square feet of development coverage. Is this meant to imply that a homeowner would have the right to put in a tennis court or a swimming pool or a paddle ball court?
Yep, the development coverage doesn't single out the size of the different things they're looking for development coverage on. What's it, what we look at is the total coverages. So if they're showing, what they're showing, we don't say that seems unreasonable, we just make sure that it's accounted for under their coverage, their maximum allowable coverage, and Bob ensures that it's, it's captured in their stormwater.
So the, so that's one issue, the stormwater.
Yep.
But so 7,200 square feet of development coverage has been included in the calculations?
No, I, I think that what we, we have, we have to develop the development coverage and building coverage calculations based on what's on the plan. And I believe if someone wanted to change that plan, if I'm correct, they would need to come back to this board and say, hey, we want to get rid of this, that, and that, and put this in instead, so we don't exceed what this board had already...
But for those elastic areas that we give, 10, 15 percent?
Correct. Well, the, the coverages, you're approving the coverages, and, and we've had a historical issue with not having the appropriate documentation in the planning board's resolution of approval in the plans, on the plans, to make sure that the building inspector has the right information when he's reviewing the building permit applications. So there's a lot of changes that come back to you later on. We are trying to do better. This applicant has provided an actual coverage map, which identifies the different coverages for building and for development coverage, and this information is, will be embedded in the resolution when you get to that point.
But to Sheila's point, which I think is an excellent point, if you say that you're, this was designed with the intent of having a 7,200-square-foot tennis court, then someone's going to come in with false expectations, conceivably that they will have enough development coverage on the property to allow that and will not be happy.
Well, they may, by the time they get done in development.
No, I think, I think we're just, if they can make a 900-square-foot tennis court, then they can.
Well, that would...
You're approving this, you're approving the square footage.
Can they cut the house in half? Can they cut the house in half and use that coverage?
Yes, that's the point.
They can, they can. What we ensure involves, involves in this process, and what the building department ensures, that they are not exceeding that maximum development coverage.
The coverage, the number is, is the guiding metric here.
Correct.
And I think that the reason, maybe I'm wrong, but the reason these different categories of coverage development elements are in there is to, to, to give a definition for what that is.
Correct.
But no matter what it is under that definition, it can't go beyond the coverage, the maximum coverage.
Correct. We even include stone walls, natural stone walls that are on properties as development coverage.
Yes, they do.
Natural walls.
Natural walls, you do. This word, you said that is the...
Vents both, too?
Well, I'm still, I'm still stuck.
I think, though, it does give a false impression...
I agree.
...that you could look at this and say, hey, I have permission to put a tennis court in, without focusing on the fact that your development coverage is maxed out at 900 feet, and might like to add to that discussion whether we think 900 square feet is enough for a pool, and, because this is an issue that's come up repeatedly, is the size of the pool and the size of the deck, or the stones and the patio and everything.
But to spread his point, though, if we're...
But they always come in with their own development coverage calculations, and they, they would show that they're over, and they know they're over.
Yeah, that's when they come in.
Right, because it's, I think it's hard to put a pool in.
Yeah, if they're going to build a 5,000-square-foot house.
But they know that, I'm sorry.
Because we have the ability at this point to adjust those, those totals, those maximums, I'm asking the question of whether we think 900 square feet is a sufficient allotment for even a pool, which would be the smallest of these developments, tennis court, paddle ball court, or a pool. The pool is the smallest thing.
But couldn't a, couldn't a developer, a prospective home builder, say, well, you know what, I'd rather have a tennis court than have, I could have a 5,000-square-foot home and a 900-square-foot swimming pool, but I want to have, I mean, it seems to me that that's the developers' and homeowners' decision about the trade-offs to stay under the total coverage.
No, I actually think in Newcastle, we have additional regulations about how large a lot has to be...
We do.
...for tennis court, and I think, somebody told me once, maybe you can confirm it, Jennifer, that you have to be three times zoning for a tennis court. So if you're in two-acre zoning, you would actually need six acres to put in a tennis court.
I don't know off the top of my head, I don't have to...
I heard this once.
So what would you have as, what's your suggestion?
Take tennis...
Take tennis paddle ball court off, and actually look at whether we think 900 square feet is enough allotment for even a pool.
Or just make a 900, just state there's a 900-square-foot allotment in this drawing, and the developer has to, has to be aware that if he proposes something else, it, it has to be...
So why, so why, why refer to the definition of coverage at all, which I think is what Dick's saying, it's just 900 square feet, let them figure out what qualifies.
So, so the applicant put this information on the plan because it mimics the worksheet that we require to be filed when, when somebody submits an application. A new coverage worksheet is submitted when somebody makes a building permit application. We then look at what was submitted in the building permit application and compare it to what was decided before the planning board. In conservation subdivisions, you alter the coverage calculations. You require less coverage than what is required by the code, okay? That, that's kind of the, the direction. You allow what, well, you, you request. You have the ability to reduce the maximum coverage.
I'm not sure we're addressing Sheila's point, though.
Well, I'm going to talk, so, so when the two, when, when the building permit application comes in, and there's differences in the actual line item sizes, the area of the line items, we don't necessarily control that, what we look at is the total number.
I, I know, but I think Sheila, forgive me if I'm wrong, but I think Sheila's point is, let's just say that somebody's already bought a lot, they built a home, and now they want to come back and put a tennis court in. So they have to go through the same process of making an application, but I think that Sheila's point is, and I'm not, I'm not sorry I agree with your point, but Sheila's point, I think, is, in the documents that he has in front of him, one of the things it says, it implies that you can have a tennis court. And so why even list a tennis court? Why even list, why provide a definition for these things? Let them go to the zoning code or the subdivision code and discover it for themselves, rather than implying that they can do these things.
I recognize it creates a form.
You need just 900 square foot of additional coverage?
First of all, I think that, you know, based on all the planning we've done on these properties, I can confidently say there is no way I could probably design and get a tennis court permitted through this board on these properties. It's not going to happen. But what we did was, we color-coded each lot, and then we, per your coverage calculations worksheet, we've color-coded everything, the houses are all in this color, and it, it shows up in the chart. The driveways are in this color, it shows up in the chart. Patios are yellow, pools, and that's all, that's all done in there. The other thing we've done is, we've looked at the code closely, and we understand that when the board looks at things, they want to take a global approach, so we actually over-design. So we're very close to maximums on all these things, and you could always go less, but to go bigger is going to be difficult. So these are pretty much, and we do that so a developer doesn't come in and say, well, you only showed a 2,200-square-foot house, and now I want a 4,400-square-foot house, and then you guys end up in a long discussion back and forth. So we try to start at the larger end, and they can always go down. But I don't think there's much more room to go higher.
Okay, but that still doesn't, I don't think that gets to Sheila's point.
So I think, excuse me, is that really, we don't care. We, we have a, a map that shows pools and culivators. We have that. It's all outlined, it's square foot, so that's what a developer is going to see. If the board would prefer to have something that just says 900 square feet of additional coverage, that doesn't bother you? That doesn't matter, but we know what we're selling because it's visual.
That would have to be carefully defined, too, because development coverage is also the driveway...
But it is defined. It's defined in the code. It's already defined.
It's defined in the code.
It's really, it's really, what I'm trying to say is, it's really your choice. You can word it any way you want, as long as it represents...
Her maximums.
Our intention is that it's 900 additional feet. We're going to make it a pool, because we have it defined.
It'd be chicken sharks.
So if you want to make it, if you want to just say pool and erase everything else, it could be a chicken shark. But it could, yeah, but it could be a handball court, right? It could, 200 square feet, you could do a handball court.
Handball court would work.
You could do that, yeah.
Half one.
No, it's the only...
Okay, okay. Good.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
I hesitate to do this, because it's getting a little late, but I'd just like to go back for a second to this, the Norway maple and so on, because I'd like to make a suggestion to you, Steve, and to, and to the applicant also, that you just happen to be caught now in this nexus between what the code says and what, you know, what the planning board thinks maybe is another way to do it. And I don't mean to hold you guys up in this, but if, if, if we're giving credit to an applicant who's taking out a Norway maple, an invasive species, right now it's a Norway maple we're talking about, it seems to me that, that the purpose of that would be to incentivize that. But in the, in the way in which we're applying it, we're not providing, this, this is not a reward for, an incentive, an incentive, right, reward, because they're going to do it anyway. They're already getting the reward by being able to clear the land and realize value out of that. So I completely agree with the, with the, the objective to control these species. But if we're going to use incentive, let's really make it an incentive. And maybe there should be something in our tree code that says that you take out a Norway maple and you are relieved from having to put to, and you take out other trees, you're relieved from having to put in the trees, you know, two trees that you otherwise would have to put in, in order to get rid of the Norway maple. Or some other incentive that then says to the applicant, well, you know what, instead of me providing six hundred trees, maybe I only have to, if, if the code reads this way, I only have to provide four hundred trees and I get to go in and take out fifty Norway maples. Well, maybe there's, we ought to, if we're going to do it, we ought to use it as an incentive rather than, in this, in the way we're using it now, it's, it's just not.
And try to keep the other trees if you can and focus on the Norways.
Right.
So if you have a debate between a nice oak and a Norway, but the, it's easier on the plan if you take out the oak, but if you tweak the plan and take out the Norway.
They get credit for the Norway.
You get credit for the Norway.
Credit for the Norway.
But the key on this, I think, is, is leaving discretion to the approving authority on it. Because if you recall, on this application early on, we spoke about the function of even the invasive trees in terms of long, of visibility of the site. And even though they were Norway maples, they were still performing a function in terms of screening. So again, I think as long as we have the function on all this, I mean, discretion, that's the key.
And they're still part of the forest.
Yeah. So I wouldn't want to word it so that, you know, if you just do this, you're going to get an automatic, it's up to the discretion of the approving authority.
Well, that's always in there, I think. Yeah, I agree.
I think your point is well taken.
So maybe you got, maybe you want to sort of chew on that for a while?
One other component which is a challenge with invasive species is we, there has to be more than just a physical removal. There has to be a follow-up plan of how are you going to prevent it from coming back? You know, and so one of the strategies might be, you know, we look at the tree replacement to be used, you know, for if they're taking other trees, you know, or, you know, to place them in areas where they're removing the Norway maples to help with shading out, you know, new saplings coming in and, you know, maybe use of more aggressive shrubs and other methods like that too. But it has to be factored in. I mean, it can't just be a simple removal.
Right. Not like, unlike what you do with wetlands, restoration.
Because I'm, I'm looking at this property and what is it, six hundred trees we're talking about?
Six hundred six.
You know, I can see where the applicant would be hard, hard pressed to find a place to put six hundred new trees, right? Because it's already a forested environment. So it seems to me that instead of, of requiring that, we could maybe do ourselves a favor by saying, you know, there's only reasonable, for example, a reasonable place for three hundred new trees. That really makes any sense and let's use the credits to get rid of some Norway maples somehow.
But there is in the code provision, if you can't plant on your own property, you can make a donation to the tree fund.
That's true too. But, but it seems to, yes, but it seems to me like the, the invasive species is a much bigger problem than reforesting areas that, that are providing street trees somewhere that the town maybe otherwise can go ahead and pay for themselves.
Good.
That's just a thought.
Okay. So, well, yes, sir.
Sorry, one last question. Now you're talking about removing the trees, but the area, that trapezoidal area in the upper right corner, right where it goes down to the corner by Gary and Sabina, yeah, that's going to be left untouched.
Correct.
So you're not going to have them go in there and just randomly remove Norway maples and get credit for.
No, no, no.
As of now, it's not being touched.
This is, this is a hypothetical thing we're talking about here for some, for a future consideration.
Okay, so we'll continue the public hearing and perhaps we should, we have a couple of things we have to resolve with the trees. We've talked about the ten-year, I think we've talked about the stormwater and I think we're in pretty good shape there. Are we comfortable, do we think we're at a position where we want direct staff to draw up a preliminary draft for a resolution of approval? Are you comfortable?
I'm not offensive about it.
Are you?
Yeah.
Sheila? No?
What's your recommendation?
Well, I, I want to see what the arrangement comes out, you know, for, you know, the trees and everything else and how that, that works, because, you know, I think it's a great idea, but I just want to make sure that when it comes to us through Steve, that it's something that's going to not create a wave of, now you did it here stuff, and I think we have to, we have to make sure that that's right and it may take more than.
I think, I think in terms of expedience, I think it would be the school district's preference to forget, forget about the waiver, we'll put the extra trees in and we'd like to move this thing forward. The timing is, is critical and anything we can do to close the public hearing and move on.
And we'll leave that option open.
No, but my suggestion that, I said you just unfortunately got trapped in this conversation, that my suggestion was not that this should now apply to you, that this idea should apply to you and we should use you as an experiment to work this out, because that's not fair at this point. And so I, this is something that I think that maybe we take up and begin to think about for future applications.
One suggestion is, you know, because they're, you know, going to be adding additional trees, is could we give them the opportunity to replace with more shrubs instead of trees because that would really benefit a lot of areas.
Maybe my suggestion is if we could move through to closing the public hearing, we don't, we don't address the trees now, we'll put in the twenty-two thousand dollars worth of trees, but we'll leave it open, that we'll look toward, toward an economic model that may make sense for removing the invasive trees and something that we can live with and maybe that happens before final approval. That there's an option. Can you do that? I don't think we gain anything or lose anything because we're, we'll see it one more time anyway. So whether we keep the public hearing open, so as Dick said, you guys want to consider the option or not, but we'll have that information and get, that we can close the public hearing, but also if we have a draft resolution ready. Preliminary approval. I mean, it's, it's really all the same.
Yeah, we can make, we can make amendments to that.
Yeah, it's the same timing either way.
Yeah, and also work with staff, please, to figure out this, the, you know, the way this is.
Whatever word you want. Yeah, okay. When would that be, Janice? When do we have a slot for the next time around?
I don't know. March 5th, the deadline is February 11th.
Okay.
Do that or you want to go to?
No, we don't want to go any further than that.
February 25th deadline?
No. Sooner's better.
But we, we do not have on our agenda.
Talk to everyone's doing it.
For March 5th, but again, we, it is if there is room on the agenda.
Right, exactly.
Promises.
We need a date certain for the public hearing.
Well, I would say going into March is better than February.
Well, we're going to March either way, right?
No, that's the deadline.
Oh, okay.
It's either March 5 or March, what, 22nd? Nineteenth?
March 5th or March 9th meetings, I mean, March 19th.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm thinking a lot of the things we talked about here, I think, can be conditions of final approval, particularly with some of the engineering aspects of it. So I don't know how much new information we would need to submit, and if that's the case, February 11th, I think, I know this, I know the school board really wants to move this thing along, if that's feasible.
What is the March? I don't have in front of me, March 5.
It's next week. Five, February 11th is the deadline.
I know, but what does March 5 look like in terms of the agenda so far?
We don't know. We set the public hearing, lifted the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay, so we'll do that then. Okay, so we'll schedule for the public hearing, continue the public hearing on March 5. Deadline is February 15, February 11.
And if there's any, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll think over this and then we'll call it if any.
You're authorizing a draft resolution.
Yeah.
We can do that.
So is there a motion then to authorize a draft resolution?
So moves.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we move now to our next public hearing, that's the Bognacki Ellert, application for a site development plan for an accessory apartment, wetlands permit, tree removal permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan, sixty, Inningwood Road.
I just see a motion to open, a motion to open, are you ready?
Oh, oh wait, this, this is not, this is first time? Okay. Okay, is there a motion to open the public hearing? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Go to bed, Jerry.
It's his memo, so he has the.
Oh, he has to fix it.
He has to fix it.
I retired my CE license.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Why? Not better was.
Oh, no. To open the public hearing?
It just.
You mean to prepare the resolution or to set the public hearing?
Pontificate on the here.
You don't need a license for that. We all pontificate without licenses. They should have CE for pontification. We can improve upon, right?
I think you're right.
That's a new industry. Yes, okay.
Good evening, I'm Jerry Barrett, I'm the site planner for the project. I'm here with Nerik Bognacki and Joanna Ellert are the owners and Alan Pilch is with us, he's the project engineer and David Antwork is their attorney. So we've been through several renditions of this plan with the board, as the board will recall. The property is at the corner of Inningwood and Veils Lane and it's a thirteen-acre property. It's got about sixteen-hundred feet of road frontage. It has a, it has a main home on it, historic, historic, but it's quite an old home, handsome home in this area right here. It has a swimming pool, it has a barn in this area, it has another garage in this area. And the subject of this application, one is the existing cottage that's literally nine feet off the road here. That's something that we're here for, to, to seek approval, to move that cottage over a bit toward the north and get it farther away from the road. And the other portion of this project was, there had been some previous unauthorized work in the regulated buffer area here and we had gone through quite an extensive review process with the ERB to restore this water course in here, to remove invasive species up in this area, to refence the garden, to provide property line screening to the neighbor behind, fence the garden, the deer have just wreaked havoc on the garden. And then we were going to install some walking trails through the property, as I said, it is, it is a large property. There is a wetland system right through here with a water course running down and then it empties into the pond. So.
Is the cottage still up?
Cottage is still up.
We didn't get permission to take that down yet.
Right. Question, you know, stuff is demolition before you do something is bad.
Yep. We talked about it last time, I guess we didn't make any progress with that.
So, you know, once, once again, we're going to go back to, we've also done a, a coverage study for this plan, just going back to the coverage.
Does it say tennis courts on that one too?
It does. And this property probably could accommodate a tennis court, but that's not proposed. But we did go through and we did color-code everything and we take it into account what the buildings are, what the accessory buildings are, what the paved areas are, and all that is in the charts and it's all broken down and everything is code compliant.
End of story.
So this is the site plan for the, for the project. This is the, this is the cottage here, it was taken, these pictures were taken a couple of years ago, so the cottage actually looks pretty good in these. It's gotten a bit worse over time. So the idea was this was the cottage that was here and, and the idea is get it, get it off of the road. And so we've gone to the zoning board and we've received a variance to, to move it. It's still not quite behind the seventy-five-foot front yard setback line and that's because there's a wetland system here. And the board was, was quite adamant that they wanted to maintain eighty feet, eighty feet to the back, a minimum of eighty feet to the wetland line from the back of the cottage. Early on, the owner did receive an initial variance from the ZBA and that moved it to this area here, which wasn't felt to be ideal, that had eighty feet to the wetland, so the board felt comfortable leaving that eighty feet. So we were able to actually move the cottage back a little farther back, two feet or so farther back than what the ZBA originally approved, but we were still able to hold the eighty feet. So we looked at this and there was a, a lot of conversation going back and forth about what we can do to reduce development coverage in, in the buffer. And the idea, the, one of the solutions was for the driveway, it's going to be a grass creek driveway where, you know, there'll be grass coming in, the green strips would be actually this, and then there would just be regular grass in between, so there'd be regular grass panel right here. So we, we've done that. One of the things that Alan Pilch will talk a little bit about was the septic system for the existing cottage was right here. Previously, the applicant's architect did receive approval from the health department to reuse that system. It was tested, but it was obviously old, probably undersized. ERB had concerns about it, as did the planning board, and the owners had, have retained Alan Pilch and he has now just about on the cusp of getting a new septic system that will be pumped from the cottage out of the buffer, that's about to be approved by the health department. So that was considered a, a big, a big plus to this project to get that septic system that was probably going to fail out of the buffer and get it out, out of the buffer and in, into the front yard and now it's a brand-new code-compliant system. What you're seeing is there's quite a bit of wetland mitigation required because there's quite a bit, this is in the, in the overlay zone, so there is a two-to-one, there is a two-to-one requirement, so we've got quite a bit of planting going on all through. This was an area that was just, it was a mess and the owner had cleaned it up. The invasives are coming back now, but they'll be taking out again and replanting with native species again to, to try to prevent those invasives from coming back. We're proposing a stone wall that's going to separate. Now, from the back of the cottage, it actually rises up a little bit before it goes back downhill, so we've got good separation. We're not going to get any direct runoff from the cottage into the wetland proper, rather it has to drain down across the grass, go into the rain garden before it gets released and Alan will talk a little bit more about that. We've put together our erosion control plan and this plan maybe shows a little bit better what's happening, but here's the stone wall we're talking about. So you'd come out of the back of the property, there would be a stone wall that would run this entire length. It's probably about two to three feet high on this side and on the back, you know, the grade comes up to the back of it. But we do show where the construction access would be, the existing cottage would be demolished and in that foundation area, that will become the concrete washout area where the historic driveway was, we're going to get to that in a minute. The existing cottage had a drive, always had a driveway, we didn't know about that. The building inspector was good enough to research some of the old records and he found old surveys that showed that that's where it is and sure enough, I think when you scrape away some of that topsoil, you see the gravel is still there. That will be the place where we'll have our, our dumpster area. Our soil area will be here, you know, of course, redundant erosion control measures to, to protect the site during construction. And then following construction for the long-term stabilization of the site is, we'll be revegetating the site. And, you know, this plan shows all the plantings that are proposed. We think we planted it, we've met the, the intent of the code, where anytime we're using seed mixes, we're also installing live plants of the same species to ensure that these areas, which are, these areas get established, almost all of these species will spread. So what we're going to be doing is we're going to be planting in groups and then those groups over time will keep spreading and spreading until we get full, full coverage. I know Steve Coleman mentioned that he'd like to see some kind of protective fencing, so we will be adding that to the plan and figuring out how to best fence this. So it's, you know, it's got to be up for at least two or three years to get these things established, so we have to do this, so it's going to work for everybody. But, you know, where the old house was, that's going to get, you know, there's quite a bit of planting going on in here, so there is going to be, right now this is all open, so So there is going to be, right now, this is all open, so this will get closed down. Quite a bit of planting in the back. This is in the form of shrubs and trees and ground covers. And getting to this area, this is some of the stuff in the other part of the property that we spent quite a bit of time with the ERB. And again, this is the orchard area. This is the water course that is going to get stabilized and planted with suitable species. This is an area here in front of the pond that is dominated by invasive species. They will be removed and similar to what we're doing behind the cottage, we'll be replanting that again with a series of ground covers, shrubs and trees. So we think we've kind of covered most of that. This is, this is the old historic survey information that the building inspector was able to find. There's the barn. That's the garage, the cottage, and it shows better on the next one. And this one is not marked up, but there's the cottage and there's the driveway. And that shows, that goes back quite a ways. So that kind of solved a lot of problems for us.
We have copies of those.
So, I mean, that's kind of the overview of what's going on with the site planning. We think that, you know, we've worked back and forth with the board. You remember, there was many, many plans. And lastly, there was Plan A and Plan B. Through collaboration with this board and the ERB, we came up with Plan C. And I think it all works out well. So there's no questions on the site planning. I'll let Alan take over and talk about the engineering.
Good evening. Alan Pilch, engineering. Since this plan is up here, I'll start with the septic system. What's being actually proposed? As Jerry noted, the old septic system is located here to the south of the existing dilapidated cottage building. That's going to be abandoned in the course of Westchester County Health Department regulations. And what is being proposed is a new 1,000-gallon septic tank to be located to the north of the proposed cottage building, which is here. A 1,000-gallon pump chamber as well. And an inch-and-a-half force main up to distribution box. This is the expansion area here. And this is the primary area here. It consists of 200-linier feet of 24-inch-wide trenches. And I'll just say, my most recent communications with the Westchester County Health Department, which was about two weeks ago, said, basically, sent me the five sets of plans so we can approve it. I haven't heard back yet from the health department, but I anticipate that approval very shortly.
Is one and a half-inch pipe sound small for...
Yeah, I was going to ask that, too. That's big enough?
It is because it goes out of, you know, the septic tanks clarify an effluent and then it goes to the pump chamber.
Just the liquid?
Yes. There's a four-inch diameter pipe which conveys it from the house to the septic tank and a four-inch diameter to the pump chamber itself. It just clarified effluent.
How deep will this pipe be so we don't get...
Three and a half feet.
Three and a half feet?
Correct. That's the requirement of Westchester County Health Department.
I doubt it, but that doesn't mean that I like it.
I understand, but three and a half feet.
Well, because I bet you my ground is frozen more than three and a half feet right now. Not right now. Oh, the top six inches is melted, excuse me.
Right. It was last week.
But, you know, it's a small pipe with intermittent pumping. And if it gets frozen, it's going to get frozen. So I don't know what you can do about that, whether you can run a wire along it and have heaters. I don't know what you can do.
You certainly wouldn't want to do that. I think, three and a half feet, I think, is actually pretty fair. But it's code compliant. Alternative, just put it down four feet.
Well, they're changing the code in Chicago. You know that. It's not three and a half feet out there anymore.
No, it's probably about 12 feet deep.
I don't think it's been three and a half feet up there for a long time.
Okay, well, anyway. Got a question on your grass creek driveway. There's a close-up sketch. It just seemed that, it looks like there's a backup, a turnaround area, but it looks like there's a lot of grass in the middle that's going to get run over. Looked unrealistic, but whatever.
Alan, I got a thought.
Yes?
Given the distance that you're going to be pumping, I would suggest that you put it clean out. You know, why? You know, why kind of clean out that you could get to? And that way you don't have to have a huge thing to clean the pipe out if it gets stuck.
Do you think they should put a generator in also?
Generator for the...
Or a pool or a tennis court.
There is a pool.
I'm not sure. Mr. Terry, was he had a question about the grass creek driveway?
Yeah, you had a, there's a detail that you had of the turnout itself.
Down the bottom with the car on it?
Nope. It was an actual sketch in one of the drawings that you gave us.
Oh, it's, that's the driveway right there. You mean that section?
Yeah, but right there, anyway, where you back in and where the hammerhead is. And you've got these, the strips that...
Yes.
Right. You're not going to follow that track when you're actually backing into the hammerhead. So I don't know if it matters. I don't think it does.
Maybe it makes sense to just grass creek the whole thing.
Where that little, where the intersection is.
Yeah, I think the amount of additional development coverage is negligible. And I know Alan did not take that into account for his stormwater calculations. So I don't think it matters. So we could certainly change that.
Yeah, time and people have changed, you know. I remember my grandfather's driveway. It had two concrete strips and he never missed it. He backed in, he could go in frontwards, but it was his only car. His wife was very concerned about how the grass looked. But people don't care about that anymore.
Those were covered wagons, weren't they?
Yeah, the wagon, the horses were the problem. That was...
Totally, I'm just talking.
You're young now, but you wait.
Alan, you made that whole asphalt anyways. Alan?
Pardon me?
Calculations, you assumed that was all asphalt?
I assumed it was completely impervious. With respect to stormwater runoff, I probably don't read it here. Close cottage is over here. That's the wall behind the building. There's grading shown on the plan. What is being proposed is a rain garden in this location to the south of the proposed cottage. And runoff from the entire proposed cottage and most of all of the, let's say 90% or so of the grass creek driveway modeled as completely impervious is being conveyed by a swale. The roof tree and leaders on the west side of the building will convey the runoff into a pipe and through its swale, which provides a level of pretreatment before it gets down to the rain garden. On the easterly side, we did actually provide for, I'll call it rooftop disconnection, which is basically discharged to the ground surface. It's a green infrastructure technique that is described in the 2015 Stormwater Management Design Manual. The intent on rooftop disconnection is to have runoff, if it goes to a vegetated surface, have the opportunity to infiltrate into the ground where treatment can occur. So that's what occurs here on the easterly side of the building. The way the grading is, any runoff that reaches the southerly extent of the proposed stone wall would actually, by gravity, go towards the rain garden.
What do you do, what'd you call it? Roof, what was that term used?
Rooftop disconnection.
So that just means there's no gutter and downspout?
There's a downspout, but there's no stormpipe at the end of the downspout to convey it. Is it a spreader? You know, not necessarily a spreader, but it's just...
Well, it's like a plastic thing, splash pan that you had at Home Depot. So that's the old-fashioned way of doing it.
I guess you could call it that. I used to have two, I used to have two concrete surfaces in my old house, too, so I'm kind of a throwback, I guess.
Right.
You can charge more for this.
Anyways, I'm just saying, that's how the, and I'll just say, the design point, what we established, too, was in the outlet stream from the, I can't see it here, but the outlet stream where all the runoff from this entire portion of the property goes into the wetland area. Then it sort of goes through a channel before it empties into the pond. And we took that location along the, along the channel as being the design point. We did calculations for peak rate of runoff for the one through 100-year storms. And what we did show is that even with the grass creek driveway being considered completely impervious, there's plenty of attenuation being provided in the rain garden to provide peak rate attenuation of the one through 100-year storms. And based on the infiltration, we did testing, it was witnessed by the town, that actually provides a volume reduction, too, with the design point for all storms as well. And that's essentially how it functions.
Can I say something for a second?
Sure.
I respectfully disagree with that because I think it ought to go to the rain garden because you sized it to take up all the roof area. I don't see how the water from the roof leaders in the back that are disconnected are going to make it into the rain garden, which is 60, 70, 80, 90 feet away. I put in my comment that it should be connected into the front headwall into the swale to ensure that it complies with the design calculations and the assumptions in your report that it's all going to go in the rain garden and be treated for water quality. So I disagree, I respectfully disagree with your assessment.
Is it okay if we make that? You make that connection?
I don't think it's a terrible thing.
No, we have to, we'll do it. I'm very used to thinking that every time I see an opportunity to do something that I know is a green infrastructure technique from the Stormwater Man Design Manual, I'm very used to trying to do it. And here was a unique opportunity to do it because there's plenty of distance between the building and the stormwater management practice. But if need be, sure, it could obviously discharge to the swale. And it can be designed that way.
No, but I'm interested in pursuing this just a little bit. So if one was to say, well, let's redesign the rain garden so that it didn't anticipate the water going into it and that that water, that you don't want to take to it, and that the calculations are right for that rain garden and the water in this disconnect system was just going onto the ground and, you know, filtrating that way, would that be a problem?
Be kind of tough to model.
I'm sorry?
Be kind of tough to model. You see, model it going into the rain garden.
No, you'd have to change the model.
And now if you reduce the roof area, not to take up that area that's going to be in the back, I don't know how you would model it to show where it's going to go anyway.
You have to model it.
Where it's going to go to be infiltrated. I have to model it some way, somehow to route it.
You have to be able to calculate where it goes.
Well, it just goes, it goes on to the ground.
I know, but does it then flow back in or does it just create mud? Or what is it, what is it doing? How fast does it infiltrate? There's a couple of questions.
If it's not running offsite, then it's not part of the calculation.
Right. The grades are such that it goes towards, it would, it would, it would be conveyed by these contours, as you can see them here. It would be conveyed toward the rain garden. Look, if need be, I can just connect it to the headwall.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if...
From a practical standpoint, it's, in all honesty, it's, the water coming from the roof leaders will probably never get to the rain garden. I mean, it's going to infiltrate into the grass before it gets there, so...
So it stays on site? So it's not part of the calculation of what goes out off the site?
That's why in the first place I was recommending it to make certain it goes to the rain garden because he showed it.
Oh, I understand that.
I might in the report. So you're saying you take off half the roof, have it go in the back and don't show it going there and nor be even?
I just wonder if there's a need to build this structure to take this water, the rain guard, to take this water if, in fact, it doesn't have to. You can build a smaller rain garden, a smaller structure.
You're right. Then you'd have to take into account where you're going to pick up the water coming off the imperviousness on the backside of the roof. Again, I don't know how you model that. What are you going to put back? You just say it goes in the grass? Then it defeats the whole purpose of the stormwater design? You're just going to say it's going to infiltrate into the grass? I defer to you.
I think for, I think for responding to your comments regarding, it was probably just easier just to put it right into this headwall and then let it flow down through this swale. And that provides the pretreatment before it gets into the rain garden in the first place. I think that would be the easiest.
I have a conversation with you about what I don't understand about this.
Rather than try to remodel the whole project.
Yes, I just need to be educated.
Good. Anyway, that's basically how stormwater... Okay, Steve, you have some comments?
Yeah, and the environmental board, as you know, has been involved for quite some time and are very pleased, especially with the septic system we relocated out. You use the wall and the, you know, extensive mitigation. The applicant had previously agreed to a 10-year monitoring. They have since requested a five-year monitoring. I, the view of the environmental board, and they still recommend a 10-year because of quantity of implants and the amount of material that's, you know, present in that area.
Is this also one that will require a bond? And if so...
Thirty-five percent.
Can we also condition it so we could have a reducing bond if we go that far?
Yeah, we can certainly entertain that.
Okay.
I'd just like to add, on behalf of the applicant, we've had discussions and it seems that the 10-year seems to be something that the board has required for some of the larger projects in town, particularly Chapel Crossfield and all these things of the subdivision we just reviewed. This is an individual, single-family lot and it seems a little bit...
How many acres is this?
13 acres.
So the last project we talked about was 20 acres. Okay?
Well, there's quite a lot less development on this. There's only one house on 13 acres.
I think it goes to complexity of, and the degree of some of the wetland work that you're doing here and the revamping and removal of all those invasives. So I think it's, I don't think it's really necessarily the size or the number of units. I think it really goes to the complexity of some of the work that's going to be done here. So actually, we've been using 10, eight, 10 years actually fairly frequently with many applications now where we feel it's appropriate. But again, I think working with you on the bond, because that would be, to the extent that we can reduce that, that would be, I think, important.
It reduces with time, so...
Yeah, yeah. Progress in time.
I agree. I think it is complex. I think that this plan that's been put together is a very good plan and a lot of work has gone into it, I know. And to me, it covers all the key spots. You know, and we do have, another thing I don't like is that in projects where we build something in the wetland buffer and that's being allowed in this particular case. And so that's, that's something that if you came without all of the other baggage, this project, we would have probably, I would have said, I don't think so. So I agree with the complexity. I agree with, I would like to add to that, the question of building in the wetland buffer. I don't want that to be, you know, a, you know, a gimme for other people, particularly if the whole maintenance program is small besides. I think this is a special project. I'm sorry, but it's good exercises. I think this is a very good project. It's, you know, the applicant has gone to great lengths to make this good and I think it's really going to be a nice accessory apartment. And I think that the walking trails are great. There's a whole bunch of things that are good. I'm sorry about the deer, but...
They're still there.
Just need hunting licenses.
Bob, you have some comments, right?
Do you mind if I just speak to that point while we're on that point?
Which point? The 10-year?
Yes, sure. I don't want to belabor the point. I'm David Antwork, counsel for the applicant. I just wanted to remind the board, obviously, that as far as the mitigation, there was extensive mitigation with respect, I figured my voice, I'm a little hoarse, with respect to the removal, as was said, the removal of the septic out of the buffer zone. And it worked a twofold benefit in the sense that you're removing a antiquated, perhaps soon-to-fail septic system and you're first taking out of the buffer and you're creating a whole new code-compliant, brand-new septic system that's obviously going to work and not affect the wetland if it didn't. And, you know, as was said by Mr. Brownwell, this has been a long process, back and forth through many boards, and I know that's the process. But if, I know it's in the board's discretion if they could consider the five-year plan, especially in light of the septic system and the expense associated with that, as well as, you know, as was discussed with the previous applicant and now with this, some sort of reduction over time of the bond amount that they can...
Yeah, that'll be part of it.
Okay. But yeah, I mean, I know that is, but I'm requesting that the board consider a five-year plan under the circumstances of this case.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think one observation on the septic issue was that was really something that was causing us a lot of problem, a lot of problems for the whole project. And that was something that really gives, as Dick has said, gives us a great deal of confidence and a good feeling about moving forward because it really was becoming a stumbling block. So I don't really see that as something that we should mitigate or reduce the 10-year, but it was something that makes this project, from my standpoint, really much, much better and much more supportable. So anyway, Bob, you had some...
Yes. Basically, stormwater common ST1, ST2, we discussed regarding the roof leaders. If that's going to be done, I'd recommend increasing the size of the outflow pipe from the discharge point to 46 for maintenance purposes. ST4, provide details and sections of the proposed swale. ST5, the applicant should submit a stormwater management permit application fee of $5,000 if necessary. General comments, the two sightline triangles that they show, I highly recommend that they show those on a landscaping plan to ensure that the plantings as proposed do not interfere or impact the sightlines. And I really recommend that the plantings be put back such a distance for future growth and natural maturity and not allow entry to the sightlines or else it's a exercise in utility. So I'd recommend they should be back at least five feet from the sightline. G2, the wall detail is shown on 46 should be prepared by New York State PE. The structural component, I consider it. The structural component, I consider it. GC3, provide detailed layout of the proposed grasscrete driveway, which shows the dimensions of that, so we have a better idea when it's installed during construction for inspection purposes. G4, the trench pavement detail for the replacement of the pavement going across the roadway at Bass Lane for the water service line should be shown, as I show on A, B, and C, with the six inches of subbase, four inches of binder, and two inches of top. Obviously, you have to obtain Washington County Department of Health for the new septic system, and a street opening permit and a tapping permit will be required from the Department of Health for regarding the driveway apron and the water service line connection.
Good. Okay. Sabrina, anything?
No comments.
Okay. Any comments for the public on this application?
Yeah.
Pardon?
Steve. Steve, you have comments?
I talked to Steve. We, Steve, we talked.
Oh, sorry. You missed that.
I thought he had another comment.
Enough, Steve.
Any comments for the public on this? Board members?
I have something parenthetical. First of all, I think this is, everybody's worked really hard, applicant and consultant's team, I think, worked really hard to get this right, and I feel good about it. And I do feel good about that cottage, which has been there forever, falling down forever. It used to be actually a very nice quaint little thing, but then the roof started to go, and nobody was taking care of it, so, and I always thought it was an asset to the street to have it there, so I, even though the replacement's going to be bigger, from what I can tell the architecture, it's going, like I said, to make a contribution, so I think that's a good thing, actually. But this is parenthetical to the applicant, but important nonetheless, the screening that you show around the back of the property, which is along the fence line that separates you from that big white house, which is back there, which got exposed because of the clearing that was done. This is for the town staff? One of my assignments for the balloon test was to go to that property, right, to look at, to see if I could see the balloon from there, and this is the first time in a long time I've been to the front of that building on Derby Lane. You know, if it walks like a duck, I swear that's a duplex. Up-down. It's just, it's just got duplex written all over it. And it's been under construction for a very long time, and we aren't zoned in that neighborhood for two-family. So I wonder if there is, and I could be wrong about that, but it looks like a duplex to me. I wonder if somebody could check?
We can absolutely check.
Thank you. You don't have Tom or Steve go out and take a look?
I will take care of it. Is there a way? I don't know if you want to give the address.
Seventy-five Derby Lane.
Okay.
I think it's thirty-four, fifty.
I think it's seventy-five. It's on the cul-de-sac, is it the very end?
Thirty-five?
Is it thirty-five?
Yeah, I think it's thirty-five.
It's the big white one. You can't miss it. So thank you for looking.
We will follow through on that.
If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but it takes a close look, you know? Thank you.
Good.
That's it.
Okay, good. Comments? Any other comments or questions? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we'll direct staff to, do we have to take any other action at this point, Jennifer?
It's a type-two for secrets.
Okay. So do we want to direct staff to prepare a resolution?
With all the changes...
Yes.
That we talked about tonight.
And the conditions, yep.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Are you good? Yep. What's that? Oh, yeah, yeah, different now, yeah.
It's a special screen now.
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
How are you?
We do like to talk the applicants.
Just don't get too close to the screen, because you'll disappear too.
Okay. We move now to our next matter. This is an informal hearing for a new application. Serlin, application for a preliminary subdivision plan, tree removal permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan, 10 Kisko Park Drive. So you guys saw this many years ago.
Not sure.
You got it?
This'll look like your drawers.
Oh, that's the old one. Did Jerry leave? Is that a front drive? Yeah. So... So you saw this before, many years ago. You're a smart person in front of the church.
He was so smart, he quit.
Q E D.
I know that.
Oh, yes. I'm struck by something like that.
Senior Matt is totally up to par.
Yes, it works. Some are wearing out here.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Good to see everyone. Brad Schwartz from Zarin and Stymets. We represent the applicant, Mr. Phil Serlin, on his proposed two-lot subdivision of this property. I'm joined this evening by Mr. Serlin, Michael Campbell, the project engineer, my associate and colleague, Matt McSell. This is the first time that in this iteration of the project, we're appearing before you. I know there's been a lot of correspondence in the past year or so, and legal analysis has been done on some access-related issues that I'll touch upon a little bit later, but since it's our first time appearing before you, I want to at least present the overview of the proposed subdivision. The property is located in the R1-quarter acre zoning district. It's about under an acre. The entire property is outlined here, .86 acres, to be precise. This is proposed Lot 1. This is proposed Lot 2. Proposed Lot 1 has an existing single-family residence with the driveway access out to Kisko Park Drive. There's an existing septic in the front, and there's a new proposed expansion area in the rear. That proposed Lot 1 would comprise 17,500 square feet. Lot 2 would comprise 20,000 square feet. It would contain a new, single-family residence, both primary and expansion septic area in this location. Mr. Campbell has conducted soil tests, witnessed and approved by DOH. He's confident that he can locate both septic as well as stormwater cultic infiltration units on the property, and it will be successful, based on the soil test results. The two-lot subdivision is zone-compliant, no variances are required, and we would submit, frankly, that after the subdivision, the two lots would fit within the pattern of development in this neighborhood. The way the property is currently configured, it's an oversized lot, and these two lots would fit, again, within the pattern of development in this community. The access from the new proposed house on Lot 2 is over this driveway, over Robin Hill Road out to Crow Hill Road. That's really been the focus of a lot of the correspondence that's been submitted to date, and that's the legal issue that I mentioned earlier. We believe that we have demonstrated that Mr. Serlin has an access easement over Robin Hill Road to make these driveway improvements to Crow Hill to access this Lot 2, so long as he does not unreasonably interfere with the access rights of others, and we believe we've met that standard. The short version of the law is that the access easement derives from Mr. Serlin's deed. The deed makes specific reference to the Mount Kisko Park map that was filed with the county back in 1896. That map shows Robin Hill Road. So the legal principle is that all of the homeowners but Robin Hill Road share the same access easement for reasonable access to and from their property. And I keep using that word reasonable, because that's the standards, reasonable access, and you can't interfere with others' reasonable access to and from their property. We have submitted a bunch of letters. I know some residents have submitted some letters. Your board's attorneys submitted a memorandum, so I would refer your board for a full legal briefing, if I might, to those letters. I think suffice to say, we have demonstrated, I believe, to your board attorney's satisfaction that we do have a legal access. Even Mr. Serlin has a legal access easement over Robin Hill. We have reviewed the staff memos. I won't go through each comment, but if I could just briefly touch upon the highlights, with respect to the town planner's memo, we will submit a long-form EAF and provide a full alternatives analysis, showing why access from Kisko Park Drive is not the preferred alternative. There would be more disturbance, slopes, and rock and so forth in this area. We'll provide the quantities, and that way your board can make a meaningful comparative analysis in terms of impacts, as to why we think this is the better access option. With respect to the town engineer's memo, there were a number of stormwater comments. Mr. Campbell will address those. I believe he has some clarifying questions, but we will respond to all stormwater comments in a forthcoming submission. We will clarify precisely where the primary and expansion septic areas are on this site. Trying to think what else. And we will also show site distance. That was another key comment in the town engineer's memo. We know we have to demonstrate adequate and safe stopping distance and site distance along Crow Hill Drive at the driveway intersection. We also reviewed the memo from the environmental coordinator. We will hire an arborist to do a proper tree survey, and we'll come back with a proper tree replacement plan prepared by a landscape architect.
Again, you'll do that in comparison as well?
Correct.
With the alternative plan from Kisko Park Drive.
Exactly. And we will also, I think, one of the comments was to specifically identify the expansion septic area, to see how many trees, how could we draw the septic every line, so that the primary expansion area does not result in more impacted trees, or we could draw that line, so that the more the trees would be in the expansion area. Last, I would just mention that we did receive a letter from some area residents. We received it today. I want to assure the board and all the folks sitting behind me that we take these concerns very seriously. We received the letter today. I immediately hopped on the phone with Mr. Campbell. We've gone through them. We'll respond in writing in our next submission. I just want to briefly address a couple of them. First, to clarify, we're not seeking an easement from the planning board. We're seeking subdivision approval. The easement, again, arose by virtue of the deed. There's not going to be extensive blasting. Any rock removal will be done by hand tools and chipping. Septic impacts, obviously, we're going to need to get DOH septic approval. That will be conditioned of your board's approval, so we don't anticipate any septic pollution problems. The dangerous blind curve that was alleged in the letter, again, we'll have to demonstrate to your board's satisfaction and your town engineer's satisfaction that this is not a dangerous blind curve, and that we achieve, again, the required site distance. There's not going to be a major construction job on Crow Hill, little if any work is going to be done in Crow Hill Drive. Our driveway will come right to Crow Hill, just like the existing driveway, providing access to this residence here. So our driveway would stop right at the entrance of Crow Hill Road. There's not going to be road closures and policing, and some of the other items referenced in the letter. So that covers my presentation.
What was the date of that letter? I don't recall saying something.
So it was dated August 6th. It was signed, it appears in the last week or so.
Okay, we have, okay. I just want to make sure it was something that just came in. Yeah, yeah, okay.
So that touches upon some of the key issues, I think, in the resident's letter, and obviously we'll continue to respond to the resident's comments as they come up throughout the process, where we're all ears.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We're happy to, obviously, answer any questions. Do you have any...
I don't know. Whatever you want to know.
Anything you want to tell us? If not?
No, everything, he went through everything, and he explained everything where everything was, so it's fine.
Okay.
What are the, I have a question. The, I can't read what the setback is from the 20,000 square foot line. What is the setback to the property line? Is that...
Setback 10 feet. I don't know what is the setback.
10 feet total of 20, if I remember right.
By me?
According to Arizona, I think it's 10 feet total of 20?
10 feet total of 20 for two dimensions?
It is set for 10 feet.
10 feet total of 25 or 30, wouldn't it be? Yeah, well, that's probably... It's 10 feet side lot line. Yeah, 10, total of 30. We obviously have 30 going this way, and we, that's 10, so that you're opposite. And then this building, so it just fits in what it's allowed, isn't it?
Okay. That's what I thought.
Okay. Steve, you have some comments?
You've addressed them fairly well. Based on Chapter 121, there's a series of criteria that have to be done in terms of a survey, needs to be done by an arborist, and there's been updated information that compiles with the standards outlined in Chapter 121. And once we get that information, then we can evaluate potential impacts on trees, and see where we go from there.
Okay. I'll take Sabrina, Bob, and then Jennifer will come back to you at the end. Okay?
So, again, the applicant addressed my key, a couple of my key items, and one, they need to submit a full environmental assessment form. And along with that, identification of alternatives, all fully developed to the extent so that the board can understand the impacts across the board is essential, so that you guys can see the whole picture.
Right. Bob, any questions or any other comments you want to add at this point?
Do you have my comments?
Yep. Were they addressed?
Highlight them. ST1, I'm concerned with the stormwater design. The engineer has oversized the system, but it's only going to collect the water coming from the residents, and it does not have any system or conveyance system or infiltration system for the driveway and the parking area leading down to Crow Hill. So that's only going to be as introduced as more runoff. So that's a serious concern of mine, and that's got to be addressed. That's ST1.
Yep.
On ST2, the infiltration rates are quite excessive. I would recommend that they reduce them 25% for applying, and according to Washington County, best bandit practices for stormwater runoff control. ST3, the infiltration calculations for the sizing of the infiltration unit should take into account the additional stormwater runoff from the loss of vegetation for the two septic systems, which they did not do, which would increase the stormwater runoff. So that has to take into account all the clearing on both properties, which they did not do. ST4, this property's in the Kisko River Basin, which is tributary for the Coast Resort, which is the New York City Water Supply, so all the water treatment quality volumes must be based on a one-year storm, which is 3.78, as opposed to the 90th percentile, which is 1.5. But you do allow and increase the amount of water quality volume that is treated. ST5, the stormwater narrative should be revised in order to indicate the correct volumes for storage. ST6, obviously, more than 5,000 square feet of disturbance is proposed, so that they obtain coverage under New York State D E C for NOI for SWIP. General comments, the applicant has a proposal that water line service through Lots 1 and 2, in order to provide potable water for Lot 2, therefore, the site plan should be mentioned, the minimum separation distances, based on Washington County rules and regulations, between the adjacent septics and proposed septics. GT2, the site plan should show the location of the primary and expansion absorption fields from the two proposed sites, which they did not pollinate. G3, the proposed water service should be labeled as a 2-inch diameter type K copper water service line. G4, the 10-foot water main easement should be revised to read as follows, 10-foot wide private water service line easement. G5, the proposed water service line, which will provide potable water for Lot 2, is approximately 365 feet from the existing 6-inch water main. Anytime you have a house that is serviced more than 200 feet away, it does require a meter pit, in accordance with the specs provided by John Migliaccio, Water Department Supervisor. G6, obviously, if there's going to be easements according across the two properties for the water service line, they should submit easement agreements in recordable form, acceptable to town council. G7, the site plan should clearly provide sufficient information regarding sightline triangles, and minimum stopping site distances along the access level, Crow Hill Road, and all the stopping site distances that take into account the prevailing speed and the gradients to increase the speed, the sightlines as well. G8, it is recommended that there be a plan which shows access to the proposed Lot 2 that was discussed previously by the planner, director of the planner. And then G9, the applicant's proposed stone retaining wall located in the right-of-way Robin Hill. Therefore, it is recommended that the applicant be required to submit a retaining wall maintenance agreement in recordable form, acceptable to council regarding the maintenance repair of said wall. G10, under the fact that the applicant is proposing to install a private water service line associated with easement, it is recommended that the applicant explore the possibility of installing a new 8-inch DAP water main in the long the right-of-way of Robin Hill. This added benefit of water may only be for fire protection for the new house situated on Lot 2 and the rich residents along Crow Hill. G11, a street open improvement would be required for any work being done within a right-of-way of Crow Hill. G12, they have to provide an engineer's estimate for the requisite inspection fee, since this is a subdivision. agreement in recordable form acceptable to council regarding the maintenance repair of said wall. G10, under the fact that the applicant is proposing to install a private water service line associated with easement, it is recommended that the applicant explore the possibility of installing a new 8-inch DAP water main along the right-of-way of Robin Hill. This added benefit of water main would be fire protection for the new house situated on Lot 2 and the rich residents along Crow Hill. G11, a street-up improvement would be required for any work being done within a right-of-way of Crow Hill. G12, they have to provide an engineer's estimate for the requisite inspection fee since this is a subdivision. And G13, are standard notes we have regarding staking and clearing, grading inspections and creating a.
Is there existing water, public water on Kisco Park Drive?
Yes, there is.
So one of the things, wouldn't we normally like to see a loop between Crow Hill and Rock, Rock Hill?
Well, unfortunately, the loop is a little bit tough to do because the water main, there is not a water main along Crow Hill. That's the reason. I had discussions with Jerry.
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
Yeah, if there was a water main along Crow Hill, it'd be easy to loop it.
So it's only at Kisco Park? Okay.
But by the same token, it would provide better fire protection for the residents along the roadway.
Right.
And water service as well.
And that's not to say too, as part of that impact analysis, what I will do with that is look at the other properties in the area. There may be benefits to other property owners by having that water main in the street, in the roadway instead of encumbering an existing property with an easement.
Right. Okay. Good.
So Crow Hill is on Wells? The neighborhood is on Wells?
Crow Hill.
The water main, it goes behind the building on the other side.
Oh.
What I'll provide for you is whatever water line mapping we have in that area, I'll check to see and try and give you some information on that. You know, and again, maybe the applicant, when they do the impact analysis, can kind of identify all those features for you.
Right. Right. I think that's important.
Yeah, no, it is important.
It's just what Bob's comments.
Yeah, I'm a little confused as to how water is supplied to the existing homes. So that's an interesting question.
Well, they should show that. There is, based on the maps we have in our office, there is a water main. It's not along Crow Hill, it's further south. It's along another area. It's a little bit wacky the way it's going to put it. We have all the.
I'm just looking at the gits around the houses.
Yeah.
Put them on a map and it's, people can see exactly where they are.
Are you ready now with Mr. Rochelle in preparing his proposal? So we're happy to sit down and get any information and present it to your board so we have the full picture.
Good.
Another question, Michael, on the driveway. Are you guys hooking into Mr. Rich's driveway?
That's where, Rich's driveway and the other driveway.
Can you speak into the microphone, Mike?
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry. Those driveways, they come into the right-of-way at that point. We're not hooking in into Mr. Rich's property. We're just hooking it down at the bottom where it comes out onto Crow Hill. So yeah, the driveways are together down there.
They merge together.
Yeah, you have all the driveways, they all sort of cross over down there.
Your light is on, you're going to, on yourself, put it down. Lawyers shouldn't do this.
Your parents would be proud of you.
I would like to hear from Jennifer if now.
Yes, I think it is.
Mr. Schwartz gave a good summary of the issues. One thing I think is important to add is that it's not within the town's purview to really be the final arbiter or the, you know, be the conclusive determiner of private property rights, like the existence or non-existence of easements, ownership issues, et cetera. That's really for courts to determine.
Just like the firehouse?
Yeah, so we've had, we've had similar issues like this before. So you're familiar with that. But we do need to make certain threshold determinations and decisions based on the best available evidence to us as submitted to the board as to these rights. So it becomes necessary to make these threshold determinations to determine whether an applicant has certain ownership rights or has certain easement rights or at least has a sufficient, you know, sufficient evidence of those rights in order to allow the application to go forward. So that is what I have been reviewing, my office has been reviewing, based on the submissions by, by the applicant's council, by council for, for the neighbors. We've been undertaking a pretty comprehensive look at those issues over the past couple months. And the result of that review is set forth in a memo that was submitted to your, to you last week. And the gist of it is exactly what Mr. Schwartz had said, is that there, we believe there are easement rights that exist as a result of the deed going into the property as originally conveyed from the developer here back in 18, I think it's 96, the Kisco Park Club. Interestingly enough, the Kisco Park Club still has record title to Robin Hill Road, even though they were dissolved by an act of the Department of State in 1924, I think it was. They are still the record owner of Robin Hill Road. So those easement rights that flow from the original deed conveyance.
Your mic, I'm sorry.
My, my, my mic is on, yes. Those easement rights that flow from that original deed conveyance can only be extinguished upon certain events, which we have not seen evidence of here, at least based on the submission of the information so far. So based on that, it was our assessment that Mr. Serlin does have the easement rights of access over Robin Hill Road in order to get reasonable access to his property. Of course, that's limited by, as Mr. Schwartz had mentioned, that he can't interfere with the easement rights that others along that paper street may have as a result of their own deed conveyances. So that, that's in a nutshell, the access issue. The other issue that has been reviewed and vetted to a certain extent is the, is a provision in the Newcastle zoning code dealing with street frontage. And that's at Section 60-420A, A2 in particular. And that provision of code says that you can't issue a permit for a structure unless the lot, unless a lot of which the land uses to be established or structure is to be built has required frontage and access on a street or highway specified in this chapter. So you have to have frontage on a street in order to get building permits. So here in our code, frontage is defined as the extent of a lot along a street. And then we look at the definition of street to determine if Robin Hill Road meets that definition. And the definition of street is a, a street shown on a plat filed and recorded in the office of the Westchester County Clerk prior to the appointment of the planning board and the grant of, to such board of the power to approve subdivision plats. So in a nutshell, putting the legalese aside, what that says is that because there was a subdivision map filed in the town, in the Westchester County Clerk's office in 1896 by the Kisco Park Club, that was before this board was in existence, before this board had the power to approve subdivision plats, but there was a plat nonetheless filed in the county clerk's office that showed Robin Hill Road, then it was called West Third Street.
That's a street.
Is a street. And the lot has frontage on that street. So there is a further provision in the zoning code that if you have no street frontage and access to the lot is derived by an easement, you meet those two things, if you, I'm sorry, that then if you meet those two things, then you need to get a use variance.
I'm sorry.
If you have no street frontage.
But they do.
But they do, yeah.
Okay, so.
It's, it's been raised as an issue, so, and it's outlined in my memo just to, you know, to explain why we don't believe it is an issue. We don't believe they need to get a use variance.
All right.
Yeah.
And Robin Hill Road or West Third Street has never been demapped by the town. It's existing.
We've looked through the files and I know Sabrina has done some research on that and we haven't found any evidence that it's been.
So looking at, looking at the proposed improvement of Robin Hill Road to get access to the applicants, does, is, is there a, a legal judgment in the technical aspects of this proposed improvement that constitutes interference with the other abuser's rights?
Well, I'm sure you'll, during this process, hear from the other property owners. But for instance, you know, one thing that raises a little concern, and it's mentioned in Sabrina's memos, is the retaining wall that's proposed. Thank you to whoever's doing that.
I guess I.
That laser pointer. And the question is whether that will unreasonably interfere with the riches' access to their lot that's adjacent to.
I think there are a number of things we can look at that I'm concerned about, whether it, the grades and everything. I mean, there's a lot here, sorry, let me finish. There's a lot here that from a planning point of view, we could say, looks like it's, excuse me, it's interfering with the abuser's access rights. From a legal point of view, is that therefore our determination? If we determine that, that the plan as designed interferes with access, do you support, sorry, does that meet the legal definition of interference?
I think I would need a little bit more information on how the plan, how you suspect the plan interferes with that access, but certainly the legal review that I've done does not touch upon or make any opinions whatsoever on the planning and technical and engineering aspects of it.
As to whether there's an unreasonable interference with someone else's property.
Right.
Um, what's the definition of unreasonable?
Well, that's apparently where you come in.
Mr. We can do.
Jennifer, there was a lot of background information presented to us, of things that happened in the past with regard to the property owners that are involved in it. And one of them makes reference to.
You can't hear anything. Really hard mic or your mic back here. None of the mics are turned on.
I was referring to some historic information that we received about the history of this property.
You might want to come up, there are plenty of room.
The blow is making it a little tough here.
It could be that something's not turning on back there.
No, she turned on the AC.
It's a season and day, season and hour plan we have in here.
Well, they got some oxygen to us.
And so apparently there was a suit before our town judge, Doug Kraus, at some point. And I don't know how that was adjudicated or if it even was. I think it might have been withdrawn before there was a final judgment. But there is a piece of correspondence in which the judge is asking for, he's asking for the, the parties involved to be prepared to address a particular issue. And it concerns Section 279, subsection 4 of New York Town Law. I don't, I can read it out if you want, but I'm sure you can look it up. And I just wanted to know if you could give us an opinion of how that town law, which might, which appears to be separate from our code, how that might impact any of the legal standings in this case.
Sure. So as part of my review, and this probably goes back to April or May of last year when I took a look at those background documents they were referring to. So my recollection of it is a little fuzzy, but I do remember reviewing all of those documents from the Justice Court proceeding and, and not finding any of the correspondence or information in the town's records to be particularly relevant to the issues that we're talking about here. At least the, the issues weren't fleshed out enough to really help in making our determinations with respect to this application. However, I will go back and I'll take a look at that, you said it was 279-4?
279, parentheses, 4.
I will go back and take a look at that and follow up with you.
Thank you, thank you. And if all parties involved have, so it's not our job to assess whether there are easement rights or anything like that to any of the parties involved, but if it comes to our attention that our easement rights accruing to more than one party, is it then the planning board's purview to determine what is reasonable? You know, you said they have rights to use the roadway as long as it doesn't interfere with the reasonable rights of others? Does it become the planning board's purview to look at the application and determine what is reasonable or not reasonable?
I think there's, there's probably a fine line there.
Okay.
You know, if it's an obvious obstruction, I think you can very easily make that determination, right? I think where it becomes a little fuzzy is where there's less obvious obstruction.
This can get real fuzzy real quick.
It, it can, which is why, you know, I think for, for the present purposes, I really think it's, it behooves the board to focus on the engineering aspects of it, the technical aspects of, of the application, since we've already made that sort of threshold determination that we have reason to believe that there are easement rights.
But to what, to what objective? Because we could look at this as the access road proposal, driveway proposal, which is on this particular drawing right now. We could look at it in the context of access to this lot only. But it seems to me that the obligation is to look at it as an access road to the other abutting lots, to be sure, to be sure that it works for them as well.
Right. So this applicant would not have the obligation to provide access to the other lots on the street.
I'm not saying that.
Right.
I didn't say that.
But by constructing these improvements, they couldn't be constructed in a way that would prevent or preclude someone else on this street who may have similar.
As a consequence, do we have, would it be prudent for us to ask for, when we're looking at roadway alternatives, to look at roadway alternatives that provided, also provided access to the abutting lots off of Robin Hill Road? To be sure that we're doing the right thing, that we aren't preventing or we, we, we aren't causing a hardship. Hardship on the, thank you, hardship.
Confirmation that such access could potentially be, be provided in the future for those other lot owners, sure. But this applicant can't be required to actually provide and construct that access.
No, wait, wait, I'm sorry. This would not have to actually connect that driveway to that lot.
But demonstrate that such connection could be made in the future if that lot, other lot owners wanted to make a connection.
To the, to the common driveway that we approve. Right, okay. So.
Or some.
Well, right. And so I agree, but the proposal here is to, is to come in off of, because it's the only lot frontage that this lot has, right? So they have to come in there and they have to, they have to use that roadway in order to get, I'm talking about the, about the proposed lot number, lot number two?
Two.
Right. So they've proposed to come in off Crow Hill. One of the things that staff has asked for is, let's look at alternative access off of
Kisco Park.
Kisco Park. And possibly even West Street, which is that perpendicular, so access may not necessarily be from Crow Hill.
Understood, but this proposal is.
As proposed, correct.
And this is the preferred proposal. And if they're going to, it seems to me, if they're going to carry this as a proposed proposal, they need to show a, to me, for me, it seems to me, they need to show a common driveway proposal that shows easy access to the rich properties that are, that are on, that, but the road. And that's not, and it, that's how we would determine also all of the environmental, the drainage, steep slopes, all of the analysis that we do would have to, that that proposal would have to run through all of our, all of our judgments on all those things that we care about. And it would be not only from Crow Hill, if they choose to keep that as an option, but it would have to be obviously the same from, from Kisco Park Drive. This drawing doesn't do it yet. This drawing does not recognize.
I just want to point out, there is a section of code under Chapter 113, under Appendix 1 and 2, which indicates and has all types of detail on the design data for common driveways serving up to four lots. So when you're doing the layout, make sure you comply with that because I'll be checking that.
I mean, I think Tom is right on target with this because I think we have an application before us with an instant issue, but we look at this as more of a global issue to make certain that we're not impacting other people.
Future, in the future, in the future. And I think part of that demonstration would be to also point out each of the different adjoining or neighboring property owners, how they're currently gaining access and then some of the one or two undeveloped lots, how they might in the future. So I think you need to see it from this more globally so that you know that every property is served somehow and served in a reasonable fashion and nothing that we're doing is going to preclude anyone else from enjoying either their current access rights or access rights in the future.
Well, even, even though there may be a lot here which has frontage on Robin Hill Road that has access to the property from another.
Kisco Park.
Yeah. Doesn't mean that that relieves you of the right to be sure that they also have access from Robin Hill Road, if it, Robin Hill Road, if they choose to.
Yeah, I think it's like, it's like a mini, it's a mini avoidance of mini segmentation. So, you know, the environmental stuff, so it, it is good to do what we're talking about.
I would have treated.
It's required.
Common driveway, that.
Well, isn't that?
It's required.
Wow, and it only took us 10 or 15 minutes to get to that. That's great.
I want to go back to the question about the, the riches' drive, asphalt drive and the proposed drive, because it does seem that one emanates from the other. So presumably the riches have improved their asphalt driveway down to Crow Hill Road, but the proposed drive has to cross over that improvement that's been provided by the riches.
Will connect at the, at the entrance.
But here it's not showing at the entrance, it's showing it as an. But here it's not showing at the entrance, it's showing it as an offshoot of the asphalt drive that exists onto your property.
There's going to be some overlap for, I don't know how many, you know, how many square feet.
Well, then don't you get into issues of who's responsible for maintaining it and repaving it and plowing it and-
And, and that's the issue between private property owners to maintain those private improvements. So we will raise our hand and say that we will be responsible for maintaining from Crow Hill to our, you know, to, to our lot. So if there's, you know, so that, that way we don't get into any, you know, sort of back and forth with the board as to who's maintaining it. We will say that we will maintain the entirety of our driveway all the way to Crow. And the extent that overlaps with the riches driveway, we're allowed to do that, correct? Because that's a common easement that we both share. If in the future they work out some agreement to split the cost for that tiny, tiny portion, I'm not sure if it's worth, even worth it frankly. I think it's, how do you even begin to sort of hack that up? So I think we would say that we would maintain the entirety and then the riches would maintain the portion that spins off and, and we would maintain ours.
Just, just so that I understand where this might be going, because do you, does your client contest the right that is being asserted here, that they have access, they have rights to access and-
That the riches have rights to access? We don't contest that at all.
Okay. Well, I just don't understand what, okay.
No, no.
We have a drawing here which doesn't recognize that yet.
How so, Mr. Curly? Because we're not, we are not changing the riches' current access at all.
I'm sorry. The current access that they're getting looks like it's off the Crow Hill Road right-of-way and not necessarily the, what's been termed the Robin Hill Road.
Correct, that, that's it.
Even though there's some dispute about whether that's the right name for the street.
That's their current access. We're not changing it. We're not touching it.
No, I'm talking about the right to get in from Crow Hill Road.
Which we're, we're-
The right.
They own two, there's two-
They have rights, unless I'm, they are asserting rights, as I understand it, to have access on this frontage as well.
And they could have that access.
Not by this drawing, not that I can see.
If they wanted to change their access point, they have every right to then tie into the improvements that we would be making.
Where? You, you have to demonstrate where and how that works.
Well, I would submit that, that would be up to-
That's what we're asking for.
That would be up to them at some point.
No, it, but-
Because right, right now, their, their access has always been in this location to Crow Hill.
That's neither here nor there, right? What they're doing now has nothing to do with what their rights are to do, right? So it seems to me that, that if, if improvements are made in this, in this road, in this, what's now we're saying is a road, that make it more difficult or make it impossible for them without some, without changing the design of and the construction of the road that your client has put in, how do you negotiate that? I mean, how do you get to an agreement between two property owners to do that? Seems to me that we need a drawing that it's, it's not a matter of regrading, it's not a matter of redoing the drainage, it's not a matter of the necessity of these two parties coming together over a difficult planning and engineering process, construction, but rather just a matter of somebody tying in from their, reasonable point from their property line into what would be an existing driveway. And I don't yet see that in this drawing, and I'm just saying, I think we need to see that.
We didn't look at that because frankly, this is their existing access, it always has been, and it's presumably their easiest point of access and least environmental disturbance. So we're happy to take a look at conceptually if, if in the future someone wanted to connect here.
Yeah, I think that's why I asked you, do you recognize the right that they do have the right to do that? But that's up to you guys to-
And to be clear for the record and for everyone sitting here, we do recognize their right to make improvements within the Robin Hill right-of-way the same way we have the right to make improvements within the Robin Hill right-of-way. So if in the future they decided for whatever reason they wanted to relocate their access here, cut, close this off and install some new connection to our driveway, and, and it makes sense for them from grading and environmental reasons, they get approvals from the town to do so, they have every legal right to do it.
So they have a legal right to come in and rip up your client's driveway in order to get access?
No, they don't have a right to rip up our client's driveway. They would have to-
Well, they may have to, where you just pointed, they'd have to do something in order to, to get there because the grades don't work. So I just, I think that you know where I'm going, that you just need a common driveway proposal as though it was going to be built. And then just build, and just, don't build their connection, right? But just build the part which serves your client with the remaining piece if the riches choose to do so to tie into it without having to-
If they already have a connection here, why, why explore an alternative connection?
Because-
Let's say 10 years from now they want to do, develop it properly differently and they need to go out that way.
Because they-
Because they can.
It's not us, it's not for us to say that, that gee, that works for you, that's all you get. It's not for you to say it either.
It's not.
They have rights. I was asking if you recognize their rights.
So we recognize their right.
Thank you.
The question I think for us is how far do we need to take that analysis?
It's a question for us.
Well, if they wanted to in the future tear up our driveway, regrade it and, and meet so that they could connect, they can do that.
Where do they get the right to tear up your driveway? Are you going to grant them the right to come in to tear up their, your driveway?
Well, no, they would have to, they would have to present a road improvement plan.
To who?
To the planning board. Your planning board under Town Law two eighty A.
But it's, but it's your, it's his driveway.
So they're a common-
The driveway is not his really in the, in the right-of-way. It's part of a road. That's what's complicated.
Is it a, does that, does that, does that driveway then get conveyed to the town or is it a private road?
Absolutely not, absolutely not a private-
It's private road.
It's not even a road. It's a-
It's a driveway. It's a private drive.
But he, but nobody owns the rich.
Well, the club, I, I think he owns it. I think, I think the applicant owns the road, the driveway.
The driveway improvement, we would, I mean, if we want to split this in, he would own the asphalt, right? The Mount Kisco Park Club technically owns the roadway bed. So we have a right, an easement right to install, just like if I had an easement over your backyard to, to plant a garden, I would, I guess, own the plants and, right, I would own the plants, but you would still own the underlying land.
So I would have the right to go ahead and rip up your garden because it's on my land? No.
Under that easement agreement, I would, I would preserve my-
Exactly.
Preserve the right, that you couldn't do that.
Of course.
It's the same thing, it's the same thing here. So it's, it's shared common easement rights that everything has to sort of work.
Everybody has to agree, right?
Not necessarily everybody has to agree, because if there are, if there's a disagreement by a neighbor as to they don't like our plan, that doesn't, that doesn't mean that we're forever precluded from developing a property.
I didn't, I-
I was just focused on the, everyone has to agree. Everyone, everyone doesn't have to agree.
No, nobody has to agree.
Right, right, right.
I had a question for Michael. In lot number one, we have an existing septic area.
Right.
Is that okay? It's in the front, right?
Yeah, but it has no current expansion area. No, because there's no current expansion.
Why is the expansion so much larger than-
Because it's-
It's a bigger house.
What they did then, we have no idea who, what they did and what they decided their rates would be and everything else. But we do know now and we have to have everything witnessed and everything else. So what you're seeing in the back is what you would have to do if you were going to do expansion. You don't have to do that now. I just noticed that on the plans and I said, oh, was that on the plan?
Well, one of the issues, I mean, you know, one of the other tenants that we always look at is, you know, the person who's, you know, proposing the improvements, you know, as much as possible, any impact should be on, should be borne by that property owner rather than on others.
It is.
So one of the issues I was thinking about was whether or not if there's, again, to look at as an alternative, access from Kisco Park Drive, but also using the drive at lot number one and proceeding back to lot number two across lot number one without having to, you know, blow up the, the front of Robin Hill Road. Do you have all this expansion area and obviously you can't have a drive over an expansion area?
No, but you also, we can't drive that way. First of all, that would be a flag lot, which would make you stand up and say no, because we can't come up that way with the driveway.
It would be a flag lot, the lot is still-
You can't drive that way anyway. It goes, you come in low at the, in the front of the house, get in the garage and you can't-
You're proposing the same sort of thing on either side. I mean, there's steep slopes on either side, whether we're coming from Kisco or we're coming from Crow Hill. There's huge impacts on slopes.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. There's, there's huge impacts.
If we have an existing drive, we're at least getting up there without doing any additional damage or impact to slopes.
It would-
It's not a flag lot because it's already existing this way.
I'll look at it.
Okay.
I'll look at it.
The question I was asking is why the expansion area is just so much larger than the existing-
It's based on how much depth you had, sort of has fill on it and everything else. It's what we found when we dug the holes there.
Right.
And everything's been witnessed, tested for deep holes and witnessed, tested for perk tests and everything else.
So one of the things that this drawing reveals is, is the really awful condition we have without having sanitary sewers here. I mean, it's like, there isn't any area that isn't, isn't, doesn't, isn't covered by improvements that isn't-
It's, it's a lawn back there too. So it's already, it's already a lawn.
That isn't a, a, an SSDA area.
Yeah. That's because they're small square acre zoning, that's why.
So underground, it's like most of, most of this neighborhood apparently is septic systems.
Isn't this area a hotspot area in terms of faling septic and then, you know, the urgent need for sewers?
Yes.
And how does that impact continuing development and-
It does say that, it does question the wisdom of these small lots without sewers.
Yeah, the postage stamps. But that was what they did back then.
No, I understand.
Yeah, they postage stamped everything.
Sure, I understand.
There's probably a summer point, a city, you know?
Well, it's, it's not a public hearing, but we obviously noticed that there are folks here. Does anyone want to say something? Sure, come on up. We customarily do this for public hearing, but we're here, there's no oxygen, so let's go.
Just a minute, I just want to expand on that. We have, it's not required we do this. We would appreciate that no one who talks repeats what somebody else did because we're going to get home tonight. And proceed that way and go.
Appreciate it and appreciate the opportunity to speak at a non-public hearing for sure. Don Rossi is my name from Hogan and Rossi up in Brewster. I've been one of the people kibbitzing with Jennifer and with Brad over the last few months about the access rights. We acknowledge easement rights as outlined by Jennifer in, in her memo, okay? We all share, all of the owners of those lots own easements over the roads. But what I appreciate so much of hearing all of you tonight, Mr. Curly especially, is that what, what you have before you, and I don't think you need, you need me to tell you this, you have an 1896 subdivision plot that was prepared when the developer wanted to maximize how many little lots they could get to make money back then, laid out roads, probably with some semblance of reason when he was doing it, but it's far less than what your board and other regulatory agencies would want these days. So I think the key issue with regard to the access is not so much the rights of access, but the, the job that your board has arises to an obligation, maybe it does, to see that the road that's designed to serve this lot is done in a way that not just provides reasonable access, but provides access to the satisfaction of your board. Because I believe that a town road, that private road specs is what would be required here in order to do as much as you can to correct wrongs of the past. And I, I don't mean it obviously that negatively, but, and I don't know how intimate all of you are with that neighborhood, but my one drive up and down the streets shows that things have been done in a little bit of a patchwork fashion. I, the, the overriding concept in the two eighty A second part test of reasonable and adequate access is access for emergency vehicles. I watched a Huffman fuel truck do like six movements before they could get up to a house off, off of Kisco Park Drive. So that is, and staff has pointed that very well to analyze these different access rights. We, as, I represent the riches, the, there is, please understand that we believe our access rights to our undeveloped lot are severely restricted by this proposal. We'd be able to cut in from Kisco Road across our easement area directly in. We're now confronted by a retaining wall that should be part and forced to go further up the easement area to access that lot. So we consider that an impact. We also consider utilizing the Crow Hill roadside, which is a narrow winding road, as I'm sure you're all familiar with, a connector road to Yorktown and, and other areas, to place another driveway that exits onto that road as opposed to going out Kisco Park and out to Main Street to the more controlled intersection with stop signs, makes, just jumps off the page that that makes a lot of sense, okay? Issues have been raised in the town engineer's memo that are very important to us, rock outcroppings. We, we believe based on what, what the clients have told us is that the, the deep test where the recharge is in the, let's see, northwest part of the site may have been done across the property line and not in an appropriate spot. We'd like during our own engineering review to have copies of the underlying test data so we can double check that and confirm it. So the staff memos have addressed many of our, our concerns and, and potential deficiencies in design. And we really encourage the board to continue on the track that I'm hearing tonight, that take a look at this overall neighborhood, look at the developability of other lots that have been vacant for some time, look at the standards on the two eighty A and require much more than a driveway to serve only one lot. This does have to be looking, look at it in a bit more global fashion. On the, on the tree plan, I've been advised that there have been some, there's been some tree cutting already by Mr. Serlin up in the area of the, either the lot or the easement. And we'd like to make sure that those trees are included in the tree inventories that are shown in the plan. And other than that, we look forward to the staff's, the responses to the staff's comments and we may well have our own. Appreciate it for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Maria Zakaria. I live at six Kisco Park Drive. And I, we actually have a back lot that is potentially developable, developable that's not yet developed. We, I know that in our petition letter, we mentioned the rock and it was addressed by Mr. Serlin's representatives. And I want the assurance that it's only going to be done by hand tools and I do not think that's possible. We just developed our land, we just put up a brand new house and we were unable to do it with just hand tools. And we hit the rock that you, I'm sure are going to hit because we hit it in our backyard, which is butts up to that property. So I'm seriously concerned about having to blow up the rock. I don't think it's going to be able to be done with hand tools or machine tools. I had a huge machine, a huge jackhammer attached to a backhoe that wasn't able to take care of it. So we had to adjust our plans based on that so we didn't, you know, use explosives. So I'm concerned about that. I certainly don't want to end up with flooding from that. I've seen that happen elsewhere. My other concern is that we live directly across from Mr. Serlin's other property and it is overloaded with trash and I don't want to see that happen at this new property. We're already seeing an increase in raccoons and rats and I'm concerned that that's going to continue to happen at other properties.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, don't, you don't have to force it.
You don't have to comment now, there'll be a-
We will have public hearings. Okay. Not seeing any more. We will reschedule this for, I think, a continued informal. We have some information, we have a lot more information to see here. So whenever the applicants can get this in, I would say probably the earliest would be, what, perhaps March 19th on the earliest side?
I think it depends when they submit.
Right, okay.
Mr. Chairman, could you do a site visit?
I think it would be a good idea.
I, I think it would be helpful for the board to have additional information about other approaches and, and other opportunities. So when you do your site walk, you'll have more information to consider in preparation of that site walk.
Okay, fair enough. Good. So we'll wait for additional submissions on the responses to staff, response to inquiries and comments from board members and the alternatives.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, I don't know the board's procedure when you do site walks, if it's possible to have, have us notified. I don't know if you schedule it at your regular meetings, but certainly the riches would be interested in you seeing their property and reviewing that. So if you could let us know, we're, we're in touch with everyone.
I think it's one of the few times we don't have real worries because we're going on a public street.
Yes.
Public, private, but I don't think the owner's going to object.
No, no, but I would encourage you because of the intricacies of the, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to close the meeting?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ah. Just describe it.